Thank you all for being here this evening. It is a little bit after 6 o'clock, Thursday, July 3rd. This is the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, if we can have a roll call.
Councilperson Aller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar.
Here.
Councilperson Bowland.
Present.
Councilperson Croson.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Present.
Councilperson Lautermilke.
Here.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. At this time, we give 30 minutes of time for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. If there's an item on the agenda that you are here to discuss, you will have an opportunity to do so once we get there. But at this point, 30 minutes for public comments on any non-agenda items. Please, if you approach the podium, give your name and address for the record, and try and keep it to around three minutes if you can.
My name is Donald Wayne Hyde. I live in 1411 Papa Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. I'm coming back to talk to you. It's been six months since I brought this up the last time, and I let time go by, because the casino was being built. And when I first gave this speech, they'd barely done hardly any work to it at all. Now it's getting bigger, and it's starting to look like a building. I don't believe they're going to have it done by what they want. They want to have it opened next spring. Yeah, I think it's going to be late spring at the earliest. That's all the studying I did in architecture school. They're building a good building. When you build a good building, spend the money, it takes more time. They better use that time wisely. With that said, I told you when I talked to you before, I don't believe this town is anywhere near ready for when that casino opens up. We are going to have traffic problems that we've never had in our lifetimes. Nobody here, I don't care how old you are, I don't care how young you are, are going to have seen anything like what's going to start up when that casino opens up. We're going to have, I say it as a joke, and it's not really a joke, it's becoming a fact, that we're having an east Terre Haute. We have a west Terre Haute, we have a north Terre Haute, now we got an east Terre Haute with all that business on 46. And that's exactly where they put that casino. We're going to have all kinds of traffic. And by the way, the reason we got the bid, contrary to what anybody says, is one reason and one reason only. We're the crossroads of America, and I don't mean the center of America and all that crap. I'm talking about where the traffic goes. The two major east-west highways go through Terre Haute, Indiana, and always has been. They were literally built here. The north and south one also goes through Terre Haute, and they cross at 7th and Wabash. Well, at least they used to until they moved. The bottom line is, that's why it's built here. Everybody can get here the same distance. It's the traffic I'm worried about. I think you need to spend more money on training your police. And I don't mean that in a negative way, I mean that in a factual way. These police officers are going to have to, first of all, you're going to have to hire about 12 more. You're going to have to pay for 12 more of them, at the very least. And for no other reason, and don't take my word for it, I don't have to say another word, because you'll see it yourself next spring, when the traffic gets unbelievable. In this town, it's only going to get worse. If that casino has any kind of success at all, it's going to get worse, not better. But the police need to learn how to drive safely, and drive fast, but safely. And right now, I'm seeing them drive fast at night, but I'm not sure they're driving as safe as they could be. And if they're going to keep that up, you need to have them trained. Every police officer and sheriff's deputy needs to have to take a driver's test every year and pass it. For one reason, one reason only. If they're going to drive like they're driving, they must have to do this for their job. They're going to have to learn how to drive a lot better than they're currently driving, because it's not, it's easy, and I've drove, I've delivered stuff, I've drove cars, I've drove cabs, I'm telling you, there's nothing easier than driving when there's nothing on the road. Boy, that's, the only thing you gotta worry about is falling asleep behind the wheel.
Mr. Hyde, if you would.
No, I know, I'm wrapping up, because I'm trying to make his final point. But when there's traffic around, and people nowadays, and I don't need to tell you, you know, you're going to agree with me 100% on this, they do stupid stuff when they're behind the wheel. They've got these beautiful cars, and they don't stop when they should, they cut out, or they move around, things, they get themselves in a wreck. And I might add, I've never saw more wrecks committed by both people being guilty of doing something stupid in my life, in my entire life. I'm almost 70 years old, I've never seen so many of them in the last 10 years. So the police have to learn to drive better. In order for that to happen, you, the city council, has got to give them some more money for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment?
Yes.
Go ahead, please approach the podium. And please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Craig Hendry. I'd like to refrain from giving my residential address. So, I came here today to make some comments to the mayor, and I made some of his staff aware that I was coming. Unfortunately, though, it appears that he did not give me the courtesy of showing up to hear what I have to say. That's okay, though. I will say it nonetheless, because you guys also need to hear this. So, if it sounds as though I'm addressing the mayor, I apologize. This is written for him. Hello, residents of Terre Haute, city council, and the mayor. I'm here today to raise awareness about the mayor's unconstitutional executive order regarding audio and video recording in the offices of the city hall and in the police department as a whole. It is extremely worrying that the city government is acting as though it has something to hide, and with complete disregard for the rights of the very same people that pay your guys' paychecks every year. This is unacceptable, and I would call for you all to get rid of the restrictions on freedom in the city hall. The good people of this city do not pay you all, or the mayor for that fact, for that matter, to restrict the freedoms of themselves. Now, on the contrary, they actually pay you to uphold them and be vigilant defenders of their rights. When you disallow audio and video recording of interactions with public servants in the course of their duties, of course, it restricts the people's right to a free press and severely limits our options for our redress of grievances if we are lied to, stolen from, or arrested. Without proof in the form of an audio or video record, how could we prove such allegations against a public servant? On the same note, members of the police force in this town have been proven to be liars. I will refrain from saying any names, but anybody who is familiar with the police department and what they've done in the past five or six years, since I've started covering them, they've been doing some very shady things and lying about it, and it has been proven in a court of record. So, and this, you know, how can we redress our grievances against these members of the police department if they're misbehaving, if we don't actually have proof? We're relying on you guys to be custodians of our records, but police body cam footage gets, it goes missing all the time. Maybe not from this city, but it goes missing. You know, how can we trust any city if one city's doing it? And not only that, the redaction in, the redaction in of city police department body camera footage is ridiculous. It's public records. If it happened to the public, the public should see it. You know, we don't need this stuff redacted. So, but all right, so I want to make the point that in every tyrannical state in history, the powers that be have always tried to pick and choose who is allowed to come and report on them. The result is propaganda. The Nazis did it, the Soviet Union did it, and it appears that our very own city of Terre Haute in Indiana is doing it as well, right? And this is not awesome, right? This is terrible, right? To the residents of this city, let your voice be heard on this issue, please. It may seem like the smallest of issues, but to some people, it's very life-threatening, right? The issue, sorry, I shouldn't make it known, on the signs out here, when you walk in, there's a, there's signage that says, "In the city hall, the mayor has passed an executive order restricting audio and video recordings in any of the offices of this city hall." So when we go to talk to the mayor and try to complain to him about something, if he lies to us, or if he says he's going to handle it and never does, we never have proof that the guy's a liar, right? We just kind of have to take it and suck it up. And that's a big problem, right? Because we pay these people, and you know, we don't really get, we don't really get an option as to whether we get their services or not, they just kind of force them upon us. And so, I would urge all the, all of the members of, or citizens of this city to make an issue of this, right? The freedoms that we get are, they're very hard to get, and they're very easy to lose, right? And so even, even the smallest bit of freedom is priceless. So with that being said, I am, I am going to reach out to the city council members and get some comment from you guys, if you are willing. I'm going to give you guys my email address, and then also get all your email addresses through the clerk. I have to leave early today, so I won't be able to stick around and get comment from you guys after that. But this is a serious issue, and it's not just an issue for me, a member of the press, who is not allowed ever to come into the mayor's office and interview him on anything, because he doesn't want me to, right? He just doesn't give me approval, because I don't, I don't give the story that he wants. So he'll have the local news come in and interview him, and he'll give them approval to come in with cameras. But the thing is, is that the First Amendment says that freedom of the press, the people are allowed to record the government, right? You don't need a license. Sorry that the mayor wasn't here to hear my spiel, but hopefully he can hear it, and hopefully it made you guys aware that there is a problem. I've already talked to the city attorney about it, and it looks like you guys are my last course at the city level to even raise the issue to the mayor in any official capacity. So, please do, and I'll reach out to you guys, and thank you for hearing me, and thank you all for hearing me too. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else, is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, please come up and name an address for the record.
My name is Dustin Milligan. I am a resident of Terre Haute, 700 South 19th Street. I won't give my exact address. I moved to Terre Haute, well, I became a homeowner in about 2018. During my time here in Terre Haute, you might be familiar with Terre Haute Vice News if you aren't, you might be living on a rock, so I suggest everybody check it out. But exactly what he said, that the police here in this town, I mean, they run it, and just with a stroke of a pen, Eddie Felling, made law, basically making our right to record at the police station. Basically, what they would do is they would tell us to leave, even though we're not disrupting, we're just documenting the building or what have you, without their permission, they'll consider trespassing, and they'll trespass this all property. If we refuse to leave, we will be placed in cuffs and taken to the Vigo County Jail. This is not a free society. First Amendment strictly protects these unalienable rights. So, let's just go into what I have written down. I actually put a pen to paper, which may be dangerous, I don't know. So, as the, as a media journalist, that basically is raw news and tells you how it is, we, I had the, well, the police kicked in my, well, didn't kick in my door, they just walked into my house and took all my cameras, all my video gathering equipment. Unbelievable, this shouldn't have happened. Matter of fact, there's laws at the federal level that prohibit this activity. That's neither here nor there. But when my stuff was returned, my SD card was stolen. I mean, this is three years' worth of work gone. So, I mean, it's just, what do you do? You go there, hey, where's my, my property? I mean, I even got a court order from Newton to get it back. They say they don't have it. I know they have it, somebody has it, they're at the police department. So, that didn't work, so I went to small claims here in Vigo County, Division 4, Newton's Court as well. I sued for the top amount, $9,999, but it's not about the money, it's about trying to get the card back, and accountability. Well, my court proceedings got kicked to Division 3, and now, they basically dismissed it. I even put in motions to get it transferred to another county, as is my right, due to the, I mean, basically, conflict of interest, but it's neither here nor there, I'm just here expressing that. So, I mean, I went through all the legal processes, and you know, can't record them, now they can steal your stuff. No recording in the police department, he covered that. We're media, and anybody's media, your media, your media, your media, you bust out your phone, we're all media. This badge, I just got it like two days ago, it means nothing, okay? First Amendment is, is this. So, I'll conclude, that's all I got to say. I mean, we might make this a regular thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak during this public comment time? Yeah, we're going to move on to the next item. Michelle, corrections to the journal.
There are none.
Communication from the mayor.
I receive none.
Reports from city officials.
I receive none.
Reports from Board of Public Works and Safety.
I receive none.
Reports from standing committees.
I don't believe there are any.
How about reports from non-standing committees?
I don't believe there are any.
Items previously tabled.
Special Ordinance 11, 2023, rezoning of property located at 4355 East Wabash Avenue. Area planning previously gave a favorable with conditions recommendation, and this has been previously tabled.
Okay. I serve as the Realtor for the sellers of this property. Because of that, I will be abstaining from this vote, and I will also be passing the gavel to Vice President Bowland for this item.
Thank you. Petitioner, present.
Thank you, Madam Acting President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Shagley, and I'm with the Law Firm of Wright Shagley &amp; Lowery. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, Devon Funeral Homes. They're the owner of the property located at 4355 East Wabash Avenue. Although Devon Funeral Homes is the petitioner, as you all know from our previous meetings, there is a purchase agreement in place contingent upon a few things for this property to be sold to Munchner Homes. In your packets and at previous meetings, I have presented the proposed buildings that are going to be built. It's approximately 32 townhomes. To do that, this property needs to be rezoned from its current zoning classification of C6 to the request of R3, General Residence District. As mentioned by our city clerk, this matter was heard by the area plan, the staff gave it a favorable recommendation, the area plan gave it a favorable recommendation, and tonight, it's finally in front of you for your review and decision. I would, before I get too deep into this, I would just remind you that the question is, is this a good use of the land? And that's, ultimately, that's the decision that needs to be made. Not if we like what's going to be built, but is it a good use for the land? Which, believe it or not, segues way into the next topic I'd like to discuss. I don't know who was able to attend or who has reviewed the materials, but Thrive West Central has, has done a housing study, and it is of our region, not just Vigo County, but our region. And it is, it's fascinating. It's concerning, but it's fascinating. And there was a great seminar this week, I know Councilperson Bowland was there, and one of the things Thrive West Central is doing is they're putting together a program to help builders and other like entities in the construction of homes. What came out of this report is, in Vigo County alone, we're some 3,000 homes short of what we need and what the potential demand is. And Thrive West Central is trying to put together a program to help us get to, to that number. You know, for instance, the reason I was late this evening is the Vigo County Council had a special call meeting to approve the final action of four tax abatements for two different companies. One was Intech, which is the battery company that's wants to come to town, and the other was Pro-Wash Valley Resources. Those two entities, and those, and I want to thank the Vigo County Council, both, the real and personal for both entities were approved tonight with a 7-0 vote, so I want to publicly thank the, the Vigo County Council for approving those tax abatements, which will help ensure that Pro-Wash Valley Resources continues its progress and opens up. They were just recently awarded the first permit in the country to do what they're going to do, which is pretty impressive. And then, as we know, Intech, which wants to come in town and build batteries. But what those both do is, it's going to add not only a couple hundred construction jobs over two years, which will be great for our men and women who are local workers, but the end result is going to be over 750 full-time jobs. And what we, what we learned today, what we learned this week, and kind of what Thrive has been, been working on is, we are in a housing shortage. So, tonight, the timing is, is, I will say, pretty interesting. We have a situation where before you is, and part of that report talks about how we're going to have to use, we're going to have to do infill in city lots, we're going to have to use to do that, to do this housing initiative. And here's a situation where we, we have a vacant lot that sat vacant for quite some time, and we have a potential buyer who wants to build 32 townhomes for either rent or for sale, which is going to go towards this goal and this demand that we have in our community of more residential housing. He's going to put his own money into it, around $5 million for this. So you have a local person who's built over 300 homes in our community, done numerous subdivisions, who wants to continue to invest in our, our, our community to help with the demand and the need we have for, for housing. As you may, may recall from our last couple meetings, there are members of Woodridge subdivision that have attended previous meetings, and they're here tonight. And I don't, I don't thank anyone from Phoenix Hills or the neighboring, but just, just Woodridge. And they've come to you to voice their concerns about this safety, the traffic safety. And in full disclosure, you know, I, I am in front of you and other like boards quite a bit on these type matters. And I've, I've heard a lot of neighbors bring up a lot of issues about potential development next to their, and a lot of things I hear is what I've heard before, and it's, they may not be saying it directly, but it's not my backyard. As I ended, as I ended my presentation at the last meeting, I said, "I'm just like everyone here tonight. I live in a neighborhood on a very busy street that you have to be careful pulling out of. I also live in a neighborhood that is adjacent to 60 acres of," I run by it every morning, and I think that the potential for development in that 60 acres is magical. And it's what we need, and I can't imagine that not, in the near future, that won't become fruition. So I'm, I'm just like these people, but, but where I'm exactly like everybody in this room is that I knew all of that, and I still bought the house. It's that simple. So, and then they come and talk about public safety, the, the safety on Wabash and the traffic. What, what, what makes it interesting, as opposed to where I was five years ago when I came in front of you for apartments, is that because the, that section of Wabash has been turned over to the city, the city controls access to Wabash. And what I don't even think the owners knew until we notified them, is that you can play exit onto Wabash. Now, in, in the process discussion, we've met with the city engineer, and I want to publicly thank him for his time, that he has given me and his assistance in providing information regarding this. But you can now go directly onto Wabash, whereas five years ago, there wasn't access. There was a questionable easement that went to the Kinder Music property, and then out to Wabash. And I think the, the greatest fear five years ago, or one of the, one of the main fears, is that if that easement didn't work out, people would go down Keene Lane, cut through Woodridge, and get onto Wabash. Well, this exit onto Wabash directly kind of leaves its concerns. Although, you should have received directly from Mr. Maurer, the city engineer, a traffic report. I believe Councilperson Azar, at the last meeting, asked Mr. Maurer to look into the traffic, and I appreciate Mr. Maurer in getting this report done. And what you're going to find in that report is that his initial review of this project is that traffic's not a concern. And has there been problems? Absolutely, but it's not to the level that someone wants you to believe. So here, here we are, we're in an interesting situation where we have a builder in front of you tonight as a potential owner of this property, who wants to build 32 townhomes, which if you review the housing study performed by Thrive in our region, is right in the ballpark of what we need. And now we have a traffic study by the city engineer that says that the safety is not a concern here. I would ask you to give this resolution, 1123, a favorable recommendation, and allow the, the construction of these 32 townhomes. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
We're going to open the floor up now for public comments on this.
Donald Hyde, 1011 Papa Street, I remember this conversation about three months. It was heated.
Speak up, Mr. Hyde, I left my hearing aids home.
All right. It was heated and all this other stuff, but it did not stop the fact that I disagree totally with whoever did the study on traffic. Where that placed the door on Wabash, absolutely is, it's in a blind zone. People coming and people going, there's a turn there and a hill that for seconds blocks your view. And if you have more traffic going out that road, you're only asking for a wreck to happen. You got to remember now, we're not talking about Papa, well, we're talking Papa Street where I live, they go fast there too, but this is Wabash Avenue, and there's no stop signs behind them, no stop signs in front of them, and they're going, for the most part, 60 miles an hour, both ways. And you're going to pull out into that where there's a slight, two or three second blind spot before you see what's coming or not coming. I'm sorry, that's asking for a wreck. And anybody could be in the wreck. You could be in the daggone wreck, for God's sakes. I could be in the wreck. Anybody could be in that wreck. Nobody's got that kind of ability, except for race car drivers, to miss a wreck. Do you really think these people who are going to live in that condo are that good a drivers that they can avoid a wreck when they're pulling right in front of a 50 mile, 60 mile an hour car that does not see them in time? That's why the federal government said you couldn't put an out thing there, why they own that land. Now you now have that land, but it's also your job to keep the road safe. And the number one road in Terre Haute, Indiana, is Wabash Avenue, for God's sakes. Of all the roads to keep safe, Wabash Avenue and Third Street are the main two. And they're the ones that have the most chance of people dying in the wrecks, and you know it. Thank you.
Mr. Hyde?
Mr. Hyde.
My name is Jay Detzl, and I live at 10 Berkeley. So that you understand where that is, that is the northeast corner of the intersection of Keene Lane and Berkeley. That's where the one-way sign starts. I've lived at this address for 33 years, so I have to tell you, contrary to what Richard is saying here, there isn't a soul in this room. There probably isn't a soul in this town, including the person who did the traffic study, that can give you more firsthand knowledge and experience about the one-way traffic on Keene Lane than I can. You probably would find that most of my neighbors would confirm when they enter Woodridge from that location, it seems as though I live in my yard. I'm out there a lot. So I would, just as a question, Richard, can you give me an estimate of how many, where are you? Can you give me an estimate of how many people violate that one-way sign on a weekly basis?
I can't do, I mean, I don't sit out there 24/7.
Okay.
So, can we make comments to the council, please?
Well, so, here's-
Richard will have a chance to address.
I'm sorry. So here's what happens. At least four or five times a week, I will stop people going the wrong way on Keene Lane. That's not an exaggeration. Those are the times when I'm in the yard. Those are the times when I'm on the western side of my property. I see them violate that one-way sign on a regular basis, but I'm too far away to get there. It's not unusual for me to step out into Keene Lane, pull my phone out, and threaten to videotape them if they go the wrong way, because I can catch their license plate going right into that red one-way sign that's, oh, about like that. There were two of them. The excuses that I get are always the same. "Well, I'm just going down the 40, and I'd rather than go all the way back to Poplar, or rather than circle through Woodridge." The other reason is, "I'm just going down here to the Calvary Cemetery entrance." I usually ask people, and the car that I'm stopping is maybe 30 feet from the big red one-way sign, "Do not enter." And I'll look at that sign and ask them, "Is there anything in small print up there that says there's an exception to go to that Calvary Cemetery entrance?" Because here's what happens. For those of you who aren't familiar with that stretch of road, you enter Keene Lane as one-way south from Wabash Avenue to the intersection with Berkeley. As you turn off of Wabash and you start up a hill, it's a steep hill. I know Councilman Azar lives out near me, and he climbs that hill all the time. You rise to that hill, and then as you reach the peak, it drops over to a little swag on the other side. At the bottom of that swag is the entrance into the Calvary Cemetery. When people are thinking they're just going to go that far, they come into that little swag and take a left turn, and here comes a car up over the hill, and you don't know that other car is there until you break that peak. I can't tell you the number of times there have been close calls out there, and there have been some fender clips out there. People think that they can do that, and it doesn't cause a problem. I had a lady, and this is a true story, last week, was the 28th of June, a lady comes through that intersection, and I stopped her, and I said, "Ma'am, this is one-way. You can't go. That's dangerous." And she said, "Well, I'm trying to get to 40, and I'm in kind of a hurry." You'll love this. I have my kids in the backseat. So here's what happens. We add some new townhomes to that corner. If there is an entrance to that new housing development onto Keene Lane, how many times do you think the new residents in that development are going to have the excuse, "Well, I'm just going down here to home." You know, there's only one residence on that stretch, one driveway. She lives right next door to me. That's the only residence there now. If I have that many people that I can stop that I see, the ones I can't stop that I do see, the ones that I never see, and now we're going to add some, maybe some more traffic for people to use that excuse, "I'm just going down here." There's no way you can see over that hill either direction. Last week, I came over that hill, and I'm always careful, because you never know. Sure enough, I met a Ford SUV. At the top of the hill, as I was just cresting up, I saw the headliner, the top of his windshield. And I honked, and of course, he told me I was number one. So I hope, I hope the council gives this a lot of thought. I, you know, and I understand that, but development is good for the community. I agree with that. And I don't dispute what Richard's saying about housing and being in need of that and bringing new industry to town. I get all of that, but we can't sacrifice safety for it. That's a bad location. It's always been a bad location. That's why that one-way street was enabled in the first place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Craig Fox. I live at 216 Woodbine. I own the pond at Woodridge. Last fall, we had a major accident at the corner of Wabash and Woodridge Street, and a car went into the pond, almost. The city took a few months to get the guardrails rebuilt and everything. There was a gas line that was almost ruptured. That stretch of Wabash does not have a turn lane on it, anywhere. There's four lanes, and they are running within five feet of each other, which is one of the reasons we have a lot of accidents through there. We have accidents there almost every week. I hear sirens constantly. I have cars going past my house, which is one block south of Wabash, on a regular basis, and it's always because there's been an accident somewhere between Fruit Ridge and 46. So that's one of my big concerns. If anybody living on this proposed lot wants to go to work in Terre Haute, they have to go west. There is no possible way for them to go west, the way things are drawn on the maps that I've seen. There's no possible way to go west unless they go through Woodridge, over to Woodridge, and up to Wabash, and down, or go up Keene Lane and down to Poplar. There is just no, it's just not simply available. You cannot turn left now at Woodridge and Wabash most of the time. You sit there for five, six minutes at least, and you have to hope that the traffic lights at 46 and Fruit Ridge are coordinated in order to get out. That's my first issue. Second issue is the number of units on the property. This is being promoted as a luxury development, but the maps, there's not even a room for two cars per unit. There's no room for a pool. There's no room for any kind of dog walking or yard space. It is all paved, and there's not even room for two cars per apartment. That's not luxury. That's almost Section 8 housing. And I'm afraid that that's what's going to happen here, is that people will be so, people that do go in there and buy will get out as quick as they can, and within five years, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be turned into something that nobody wants. It is true, we need lots of new housing in Terre Haute. We've got hundreds of thousands of flat acres all around us. There is no reason to put something on a hill when there are so many problems related to getting to that hill and out that will interfere with everybody else around us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
My name's Randy Mitchell. I live at 210 Briarwood in Woodridge, but that's not what I'm talking about. We are also the owner of the Kinder Center out on Wabash. That's at 4389 Wabash. I spoke once before, and I'm going to repeat this, and I did try to get more information. When we purchased or looked at purchasing that property in 2005, I did come down to the city hall and speak to the city engineer at that time, whose name I believe was Chuck Innes, and I asked him if there was any weirdnesses about the property. It was the Good Shepherd Baptist Church at that point. And he said, "Oh, you have an easement." I said, "I know I have an easement." And I said, he said that the easement exists so the property west of that, 4361 Wabash, can access their property. And I said, "Why do I have to have an easement through my property?" He said, "INDOT will not allow another cut in the curb between there and Keene Lane." Now, I didn't have the presence of mind to say, "Hmm, why is that?" And I didn't know, and I still don't know, and I don't know if our city engineer and his traffic study had a talk or discussion with INDOT. I did call Ray Egan, who was in the Viggo County INDOT office. He gave me names to speak to in the regional office, Afton Smith and Ms. Shep Ordon. I've never been able to speak to either one of those, just leaving voicemails, so I was just trying to find out why they weren't going to allow curb cuts between our entrance and Keene Lane. It's about 300 to 350 feet between our entrance and Keene Lane, but the comment saying it was too dangerous. Now we're talking about adding those curb cuts for an entrance from this traffic coming west, entrance from the traffic, an exit for the traffic going east. That's within 100 to 150 feet of the entrance to now what is Dr. Staley's office and our Kinder Center. And that's going to be a really interesting way for people to get in and out of that, our property, as well as getting out of the new property. If it was a problem, and if it was dangerous back in 2005, what has changed to make it any less dangerous now? And I think speaking to INDOT, I know, I know that this property, this part of Wabash is now under the control of the City of Terre Haute. But that doesn't change the safety factor. And I think it would be prudent to talk to INDOT and find out why they said what they said. We may find out, we may find out it's not a big deal, but we also may find out they had good reasons for doing that. But it's, I think it's going to be a real traffic problem, people going in and out, and you know people coming out. They won't just go east, they'll try to go west on Wabash. I do appreciate after the last meeting, when we were here, they did put out speed signs on Wabash. I appreciate whoever did that. Just for grins, but thank you. Yay.
I made a phone call that night.
You got it, you got it. For grins, I just, I have to drive that every day if I'm going over to the building or if I'm going into the university. I'm now retired, but I'm still teaching part-time at the university. For grins, I've just driven 45, the limit out there. I get passed like I'm just doing 10. Very few cars in that traffic drive 45, and I've just done that as a personal experience. And I can tell you for sure, I don't have a dash cam, but I can tell you, if you just go out and drive 45, you'll know what I'm talking about. So I think it would be very prudent to speak to INDOT and find out what the problem is with a curb cut, and if that's going to cause more problems or more accidents. We have probably an average of an accident a month in front of Highland Park Cemetery. It happens all the time. I clean up the plastic and debris that's sitting along the edge of the road there in front of our building, so I know this. I just want to speak from the standpoint of safety, and I agree with progress, and we need progress, and we need to do it, but sometimes maybe where we are right now isn't the best place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Anyone else?
I'm Dr. Renee Ramsey. I live at 114 Gardendale Road. I've lived in Woodridge for five years in September. I also want to address the safety issues, in particular, if any building or construction on the site that's under discussion. Personally, driving up Wabash to make a right turn onto Keene Lane, as you have heard, and I will also reiterate and testify to, is extremely dangerous. I have been back-ended almost on numerous occasions because, again, as you have heard, people don't drive the speed limit, and since it is a hill, they're driving uphill, and turning right onto Keene Lane is very difficult and very tense if you're a driver, because it cannot be done safely unless there is no traffic behind you. Also, coming out of that, of Woodridge onto Wabash is also difficult because of the amount of traffic that's on Wabash Avenue in that area, by Highland Cemetery, by Phoenix Hills, people on their way to Rose Hallen, people on their way down Wabash to the downtown area. It is extremely busy. And again, the geography of the location simply gives rise to these safety issues. And without those being addressed, and I don't see how they can, without further study, as has been suggested, that it is not a good idea to build multifamily housing in that particular area. Safety should be a concern and the highest consideration for people in the community who are voting about this proposal. I agree we need more housing for the community, but again, there is other flat land available that would be more disposed to that kind of housing for members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I am Paul Carmen from 2 Woodbine, whose property is virtually, this will be the backyard for my home. So I have written down a script this time because I wanted to ensure that I hit all the main talking points that I am concerned with, as well as I know that a bunch of my community members are also concerned with, so you're going to hear a lot of echoes in what I say from what they have said or will say. Safety. It comes to no surprise that the proposed allocation of the lot off Wabash would increase foot and vehicle traffic exponentially. Since the last meeting, the Terre Haute PD placed an electric speed sign on Wabash right after Keene Lane as a reminder to motorists that the speed limit is 45 miles per hour through that stretch. Through my own observations, I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt, first and foremost, some people did slow down when they saw the blinking speed sign as they went through there. Some. Most did not slow down. In fact, many of them were going faster than 60 miles per hour through that stretch. It is a very dangerous stretch. The sign also did not work every time a vehicle passed it, so if it is collecting data, that data is askew from what could possibly be shown for the actual traffic through that area, just as a reminder. People don't care. They see that stretch of Wabash as a speedway, as a means to move from one point to another. It is a race to get from that light all the way up to 40. Additionally, traffic still flows illegally down the opposite way of Keene Lane, as several of my fellow residents have pointed out. People still continually travel illegally down that hill towards Wabash, and the excuses we hear, again, "I didn't know any better, I'm in a hurry." People don't care. And returning that to a two-lane road would probably be a mishap due to the angle of that hill specifically. Turning off of Wabash, as several members have said, turning right up that hill is very dangerous. It is a very real concern, turning onto that street, that there's going to be a vehicle coming down that hill in our direction and cause a head-on collision. At least three or four times this past week, people have traveled the wrong way on that road, and I have heard the car horn honk, which now I know was my neighbor honking at the SUV. People travel through our addition as an alternate means to get to 46. This is specific when the police divert traffic through our neighborhood when Wabash is shut down due to an accident between Keene Lane and the cemetery. Motorists traverse our roads with little care, or drivers, or they don't drive respectfully. People blow through stop signs, they speed, and are generally a danger to the community. Our community walks our roads. Bikes with our kids walks our dogs. Pets, our family members, have been hit and killed by drivers driving recklessly through our neighborhood. I can't imagine the heartache that our people have felt when this has happened. More traffic, more people equals more opportunities for accidents. Security. Our community is a relatively quiet and safe place, minus the occasional transient that may walk through our neighborhood to get to Wabash or to 46. Now, several community members, over time, have noted things going missing. This, right now, is a rare occasion. However, anywhere you go, more foot traffic or more vehicles offer up more opportunities for nefarious activity. Currently, the only structure in question on Wabash- Currently, the only structure in question on Wabash is the Wabash Motel, as there are many transients that stay there. The hope that we can have is that this proposed idea for this lot would stand, where it's between the twelve-hundred and nineteen-hundred rent proposal. I don't see that sticking. That is targeting a very small niche portion of our population, if they actually did target study on this. And I would hate to see this zone turn into what people would refer to as Section Eight Housing, or dilapidated over time for this kind of behavior to go on. Who's to say that garden hoses or Amazon packages are the only thing that's going to happen with the neighborhood if this turns into bad housing? Feasibility. Muntzner is proposing a large number of townhomes on this small amount of space. Thirty-two townhomes, that's not going to fit there. While I'm sure his architects that developed this proposal know what they're talking about and drew up the plans, it seems as if there's very little thought as to the housing arrangements. Traffic, circling back to the safety of this as well. I do not think that people understand the dangers of, of the traffic on Wabash, and people that are coming to the area that will be new certainly do not know that. They are not from here. Just as simple facts, average reaction time for a driver during daytime is one-point-five seconds. Nighttime is one second more, at two-point-five seconds. Traffic going sixty miles per hour cover about eighty-eight feet per second. That is extremely fast, and your reaction time is extremely slow compared to that. People are very slow to react in this area, quick to road rage, and generally have no idea what's going on. This is just my observations from moving down here from larger cities like Fort Wayne or even from South Bend, Mishawaka area. The drivers around here, in my personal opinion, are not the greatest. They're very, very cautious, as I've said with most of my stuff here. So jumping back to the proposed cost of rent for these townhomes, I have serious concerns on that. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, the median income, income for Terre Haute, Indiana is around thirty-eight thousand, seven dollars, and the average is about fifty-four-four. The proposed rent being twelve to nineteen-hundred, that's fourteen thousand, four to twenty-two thousand, eight hundred for the annual rent, and that's from the low to the high end. My mortgage is thirteen-hundred a month. I can tell you the percentage for this doesn't really add up. You're looking at between twenty-six to fifty-nine percent of someone's income in this area as the average or the median income for the housing, what they're proposing for this, for this housing proposal. So, either they have targeted a very specific group of people that they know can pay this specific cost, or they're going to find out real quick it's not feasible, and it's going to drop down so they can actually meet that quota for the money that they're wanting for this property. All being said, I do see what Muntzner is offering, I don't see what they're offering as amenities either. Several people brought up, this is all going to be for housing. There's no pool, there's no basketball court, there's no tennis court, there's no clubhouse. What are they paying all this money for, to live in these homes right off of Wabash, where it's extremely dangerous to be without amenities? You can go to Sycamore Terrace, you can go to Village Court, or you can go to any other housing place in this area, Cobblestone Crossing even, and for less of a cost, you can have more amenities. Now, that's pretty much what I, all I had until the lawyer came up here and spoke about the city engineer.
We're going to need you to wrap up, Mr. Carmen.
Okay, that sounds great. So, I don't think we're looking at the same place here with the city engineer. I would like to see the data that you're looking at for this. In three thousand homes, thirty-two townhomes, what's, what's that going to do for an impact? There's sixty acres behind your house, let's put it back there instead of this one-point-seven-one acre lot. The final thing that I do want to bring up, since I'm being cut off, is I would like to ask the city council a question respectfully, and more specifically, Mr. Earl Elliott. Mr. Elliott, and I mean this not in accusatory way, I have a question for you. Is it true that your company will either directly or indirectly receive compensation for this project, whether it's approved and completed? That's okay, sir. Is it true that you will receive financial compensation if this project is completed through your company?
I will not. The builder is a client of our firm.
Okay.
I have no guarantee of receiving any compensation related to that.
Okay.
I mean, as are many businesses in this community, clients of our firm.
Okay.
Many, we're the largest CPA firm in the city by all of us.
I appreciate you being open and honest about that. I apologize if it sounded accusatory.
And I can look through that issue, and that's not a problem.
Okay.
To me and the decisions that I make, so.
Understood.
That's fine with you, that's probably okay.
I appreciate your honesty.
Good evening. My name is Bob Rhodes, and my wife and I live at One Woodbine in Woodbridge, right across from Paul and Jay left, but in between Jay as well. So, we're up against Keen Lane. I'd wanted to do some research, so I pulled up the, the code for Terre Haute. It's nine hundred pages, and no, I didn't read it all. But I did pull up the pages as it addressed the city engineer. And I didn't realize the city engineer has authority to put an ingress or egress wherever they want, at any time they want, without a checks or balance system. That being said, where they're proposing this area is in between two that are already existing. So there'll be three within three hundred feet. What I would ask you to do at this time, if you have a smartphone, is to pull it out and put, driving at fifty-five, how long does it take to stop? Because at our last meeting, our city engineer even mentioned that it's not uncommon for people doing fifty-five up and down Wabash. Well, I can tell you, without having to Google it or use your search engine, it's three hundred feet. So in three hundred feet, you're going to have three ingresses, entrances off of Wabash. That in itself is too much. I'm going to skip arounds because a lot of this has been addressed. One of the things is, is, you know, we're talking about safety. When I bought my house, I bought it from Lorraine Lawyer in nineteen ninety-eight, and she asked two things of me when I bought it. She said, one, I asked that you keep the yard in good condition. And I would like to say that I've tried my best and kept it in good condition. The second thing she said is she thought very hard to get Keen Lane to be one-way. And she did that because too many times, late at night, early in the morning, someone would come knocking at her door, bloody, because they'd had a wreck. They'd gone down Keen Lane accessing Wabash. And she said, I don't want you or your family to ever have to experience that. And I shared that with counselor the other day, Richard, in his office, told him that story as well. Looking through this last night, mowing the yard, two vehicles going the wrong way down Keen Lane. It happens every day. I know that everyone's mentioned this, just reiterating, it happens every day. And that's even though we have one sign that says, do not turn right, and two signs that say, do not enter. People still continue to do that. In conclusion, I hope the city council will take the time to listen to what we have had to say and vote no for rezoning this property. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Hello, my name's Jim Burdick. I live on Berkeley, been there for about thirty-five years. Berkeley's the one that ties into Keen Lane. About three hundred homes are out there. We've got, I think there's fourteen roads. We were annexed about twenty-five years ago. We've got three streetlights. It's all we've got. No sidewalks. Probably got somewhere around two hundred kids in those streets, and that's how they go, they don't walk through the yards, they walk in the street, they exercise in the street, as said earlier. So, you can't exagger, these people have not over-exaggerated intersection of Keen Lane and Wabash. It's just a terrible intersection. Lived through it thirty-five years. But there's going to be an exit, I think an entrance on the Keen Lane from this new development. Because I think those people are going to get tired of trying to get on Wabash Avenue because of how, how dangerous it is. I think you'll see the majority of them come back down Keen Lane and go through that subdivision. And that subdivision is not set up for the additional traffic. Like I say, everybody uses the streets. It's just walking their dog, jogging, kids, that's it. It's just a nice, quiet neighborhood. And I think this will change that. So I am hoping that also that you would vote against this. Thank you.
Amanda Thompson, sixty-two Woodbridge. My husband and I moved into Woodbridge about five years ago, fell in love with a mid-century home. I want to comment something Richard mentioned, that as residents of Woodbridge, when we bought our home, that we knew that this piece of land across from the cemetery was zoned commercial and it could potentially hold thirty-two townhomes. I assure you, that was not the case. In fact, when we first moved there, we thought that piece of land was, left empty intentionally because of safety concerns. I've lived on the east side with my parent, parents in Phoenix Hills when I went to law school, and I know Richard mentioned that no one from Phoenix Hills is here, but as someone who lived there for several years, I can tell you, I never turned left on Wabash the entire time I lived in Phoenix Hills. I would only turn right, just because of the amount of traffic and the amount of speed. But since I became aware of this piece of land that potentially could be developed, on my way home down Wabash, I started turning in onto Keen Lane to enter into the, our subdivision. And just as someone mentioned earlier, I've been almost rear-ended countless times. And then, just on Thursday, we had someone who was driving recklessly down Wabash take out our Woodbridge sign that all of us members of Woodbridge have contributed our money to, to be able to build a few years ago, and they just wiped it out. So I have emailed all of you my safety concerns, and I would just like to reiterate those. This is not the location to build this property. And quite frankly, you know, Mr. Shagley spoke of our home, home shortage, and I agree with that. It's one of the issues I hope to address next year. But this is not the housing that we need, and this is definitely not the location. And Neil, you said something beautiful at the last hearing that we had on this, that the city council in many ways has become defenders of neighborhoods, defenders of communities. And I'm asking you to uphold that role and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council. I'm the dentist at the office next door.
Can you state your name and address, please?
I'm sorry?
Your name and address, please.
I'll get in there, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
So, my name's Luke Staley. I'm the dentist living next door. My home address is forty-five oh-one East Old Fort Harrison. Have absolutely nothing against the seller, I was her neighbor at the house. I have the property next to it, the property for sale. So nothing against this netex at all, and I hope for the best luck of selling the property. It's a little out of my price range just to buy a piece of grass, to leave it sitting there, though that would be great for everybody if we could. So, you know, as I stood in front of you guys five years ago, I guess the property at that point, as the councilor said, was under a different ruling, but I was strictly told that I couldn't cut into Wabash, even though I was further up from Keen. I was fine with that. I share the entrance that he doesn't love, but, you know, it works out. And, you know, I maintain that with new gravel and such. But any case, the time I've been there, maybe the frequency of accidents, but the frequency and the severity of accidents should be looked at individually. My wife has resuscitated a patient, a patient, I, I had a patient have a severe accident out there, but she resuscitated a person in the five years we've been there. We had another car flip behind her and go through the billboard. So these aren't small fender benders as in a thirty-five mile an hour zone, as many people have said, this is a high-speed area. So, cutting into it and looking at the elevation changes, I think, is a, a great concern. When I had to cut a driveway at home, at a thirty-five mile an hour road, it was a concern on what the viewing is. And if anybody would go up there to Kinder Music or to my office and try to pull out on a Wabash themselves and look to the left, you'd see the way the topography of the land is, that anything in that area is going to obscure view, and it's going to change the driving dynamics. Something else that came to me when I was building my property was also, was drainage. And when you look at the roof square footage of this property, and then, of course, the parking lot of this property, and then the lack of redundant sewage, it's not a big issue now, but they had me put a French drain in all the way across the border of my parking lot, which is much smaller than the land we're talking here. That's going to be the same place that they're going to ingress and egress on the Wabash. So where's their drainage going to go for water? That's a concern mine, too. If it was a concern for the city when I built my smaller property on somewhat similar-sized property lines, yeah, we think it'd be also a concern now. And when I look at that proposed building, that's a concern, is where we're going to do with the water. It's not an issue yet, but if you add all that hard surfaces to the area, do we have a plan in mind for that? A lot of the other things are just, you know, been iterated before. If Keen Lane was dictated one way in the past, why all at once is it not dangerous enough to keep it that way? So, most of the other things have been talked about, but just along with frequency of accidents, I just want to also consider the level of accidents we're having there. The difference between a fender bender and mortality, or cars flipping into billboards that I watched visually, so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Staley. Anyone else? Does anybody have anything different to add? Marcus, Richard? Marcus wants to address them.
Oh, sorry. I may be able to address some of those and start with the easy ones. So, as far as drainage is concerned, the city would require the developer to take all the water that's on the site and dispose of it in a way.
Can you get closer to the mic, Marcus?
I apologize.
Some people are having a hard time here.
So, as far as drainage is concerned, since that was the last one spoken about, we would require the developer to provide a drainage infrastructure to meet all of our city requirements. That would either be to retain all of the water on site or to discharge it to an approved discharge point at a reduced rate. And then, getting into traffic safety. So first and foremost, safety is paramount to everything we do in engineering. It's actually one of the tenets of engineering, and that's something that we don't take lightly. So one of the, one of the conditions that we put in our recommendation is that it would be right turn, right out, right in, right out, only on Wabash. The other part of that, that, that everybody seems to not be seeing is that we would have the ability to review that strictly, and, and that condition would give a little more power to us in what we can review than the city code typically gives. I think there is a location on the site that it could be safely traversed to a right exit. The developer may not like what we ask of him, but it gives us the ability to, with this condition, review this more thoroughly than the city code would allow. And we're kind of bound to the city code unless a condition is placed on, on something like this. So whatever, whatever happens here tonight doesn't necessarily one-hundred percent guarantee the developer access wherever they want on the site, however they want on the site. It would still be subject to review, and the developer and their designer would have to provide to us that it is safe to get in and out of that site in this before we would provide a building permit. Jumping into some of the other things we brought up, as far as the wrong-way traffic on one way, we did set up traffic counters for a little over a week. There's actually, on average day, about twenty-two cars, or about six percent of the traffic drives the wrong way in one way. And another thing was mentioned, the stopping sight from fifty-five mile an hour, the, the number I use in this report is actually six-hundred-and-ten feet. That's the safe stopping sight distance, by the time you take in the perception time, the reaction time, and the actual stopping sight distance at a somewhat safe deceleration speed. So those are numbers that we use to determine the distances, and, and they are a little, a little bigger. So what we found is that, of course, different times of year vary, and I actually went back out there today because the grass is a little taller today than it was when we looked at it in the spring. We want to try to see it at different ways in the spring. There is a, I think, you were provided a report, I hope you got a chance to take a look at it. We used indot's numbers from their most recent count on Wabash Avenue, and we felt doing that, those are a little bit older, but we felt okay doing that because they do exceed all of the levels that would look at signal warrants, and they provide an eighty-fifth percentile speed of fifty-two mile per hour, which means eighty-five percent of the traffic is traveling, let's see, fifteen percent of the traffic is, eighty-five percent of the traffic is traveling, I apologize, but eighty-five percent of the traffic is traveling fifty-two mile per hour faster. So that, that's a number that's used as kind of the pace for traffic in traffic engineering, and the speed limit is obviously below that. So we used a design speed of fifty-five mile an hour for most of the calculations. So we used a design speed of 55 mile an hour for most of the calculations that we looked at here, all of them. So we did look at a signal warrant at Keane Lane. It's a little bit difficult to do a signal warrant where there is no traffic coming in from the south side, well, there shouldn't be traffic coming in from the south side. So we used some existing, the existing counts on the street. The signal counts, I think you'll see in here, don't really exceed or come near. And we did look at accidents in that corridor as well. So according to the data that's provided through police reports, there, in 2020 to 2022, that was the data that was available, there were 11 accidents right there, and none of which would be susceptible to correction by a traffic signal. And I wouldn't expect that it would, it is one way, it typically requires cars coming the other way. Some of the accidents involved, two of the accidents involved deer, there were three that were running off the road, one involved a pedestrian, and the others in that area, all but one involved lane changes and correction into each other. One was a car rear-ending another car that was waiting for an accident. We also did look at the traffic impact of what's there. So we used numbers from the Institute of Transportation Engineers for traffic generation, trip generation. Sorry, got to get there. Don't have the memory. So for 32 townhomes, the factor for trip generation for that is 5.81, I think, 5.81 trips per unit. So that results in, I root too much, about 187 trips per day in and out. That's not 187 round trips, that's end-to-end trips. So one trip is someone leaving, one trip is someone coming back. And then the peak hour for that is, the peak hour factor is .52, so the peak hour factor times the total number of trips gives you what you would expect in the peak hour, and that comes out to be 97 trips. And if you look at the way it's currently set up, to legally enter that site, you would have to come off of Wabash Avenue. So that would put the remaining half of the trips that could potentially go through the three exit routes, one would be to Wabash Avenue, one would be Keane Lane, too popular, and the other would be Keane Lane through Woodridge. Given the absence of knowing who's going to live there and how they're going to drive, we made the assumption that a third of the traffic would split in each direction. And I think if, if you look at that, that puts it about 31 trips per day on each route for the, for the exit.
31 additional trips?
Yes. That's additional on top of what's existing. There are about 340 homes in Woodridge. And I think keyed all this, I get back to mention safety, so we have recently applied for a grant with, with the federal government called Safe Streets for All Grant, and we're going to use this grant to look into high-accident intersections and high-accident corridors, and it's funded 80/20, and I'm hopeful that we'll get it. It would allow us to do a comprehensive study of the city in all the high-accident areas, and we can make data-driven decisions to make some improvements, and that would, going through that program, would allow the improvements to also be eligible for implementation grants. And that's a program we're hoping to follow and hoping to improve the safety here to make things safer for everybody. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you had a chance to review the report, or if you have any questions then, or...
Councilperson, all of them.
Back to the drainage. I know you said, who's financially responsible for putting that drainage in? Would it be the city, or would it be the developer?
So all the cost-related development, whether they are driver approach, drainage, building and all, that's, those are all borne by the developer.
Okay. Counsel one nation.
Staying on drainage. Where would it go?
That's a great question. We've had some very preliminary discussions. One thing we don't want to do is we don't want to cut Wabash Avenue. As you know, we're paving it. That's not really for us to figure out, that's for them to figure out and tell us and prove to us that, that it can work. I think the preliminary discussions would be to bore under, to bore under Wabash and get it to, there is a drainage system very far down the way. We don't have a whole lot of capacity there, so then it would be up to the developer to retain an amount of water, the amount of water that could provide drainage and meet our requirements.
And that plan has to be approved by your office.
Yes, that plan would have to be approved by us.
When I see modern development, like the last couple of decades, I see extraordinary efforts taken to keep the drainage on site and deal with it on site. What is different about this? What allows a developer to reach across a four-lane highway and use another drainage system?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. So most of the development in Terre Haute, on the west of Thompson Ditch, west of Thompson Ditch, Terre Haute is blessed with, with forest ground, with sand, with gravel, and we have the ability to have developers completely meet our drainage requirements, completely within their boundaries with zero discharges. We're very blessed there, and it is good for us and it's good for the developer because they can meet their, the drainage requirements at, at less of a cost, and we don't have to have additional infrastructure to meet that. Once you get east of Thompson Ditch, we get into a clayier soil with a high water table. Infiltrating the water into the ground is, is just not really an option out there.
So we're talking about a private agreement between the developer and whoever owns the retention system, that water from the, from the parcel we're talking about would enter into?
I think what they're likely looking to do, that, that could be one solution.
It's not going to go under Wabash, it's going to go down the south side.
I honestly don't know what they're doing exactly. So when we would get to that point, and one reason why is we're not at that point yet. So during a rezoning, we look at just very preliminary things. You know, if we get to, if the developer is confident enough that they can meet our requirements, they want to move forward with rezoning, that's, that's on them. When it gets to our department, we review a more detailed plan that's put together for, for rezoning. The plan that's floated around here for rezoning wouldn't be enough to permit. It would not be near enough to design drainage, and it wouldn't be enough for us to determine drainage. So when they get to that point of development, they would submit it to us, and we would review it. So what we do require generally on the east side of town is, our initial requirement is that they take the 25-year post-development storm and reduce it through means of detention or retention to the 15-year pre-development release rate. That may be different if they're going to a storm sewer. We're going to go and we're going to look at what capacity that storm sewer has, and what capacity we may need in the future for the city, and we may give them a number of, here's what's potentially left, you're going to have to meet this, and you're going to have to store on site and release at this controlled rate.
Just a personal observation, in my 20, almost 20 years now in the city council, I've paid a lot of attention to site plans. And I've noticed that over these last two decades, water retention on site has figured as a bigger and bigger role in the site plans. I note that nothing that we have in front of us is showing what accommodation that is, is proposed for taking this from a green hill that absorbs most of the water that falls on it, to, as someone else has already pointed out, hard surfaces, roofing, driveways, where all, or almost all of the water will be shed and will have to go somewhere. That, to me, that's a glaring omission in the information that the council's been given and that we're, and the decision we're being asked to make. It's something that I feel like is a fair question to ask, especially since we've required, through our actions, so many hundreds of other proposals, development proposals, to provide for that. And I'll stop, I know you don't have all the answers to this stuff, Marcus.
I certainly agree with you that there is nothing shown on this. We would not issue approval or, or permits until they would meet the requirements of city code and standards and specifications.
Marcus, thanks for doing the study and being so diligent and getting it to us before our meeting, and thanks for coming and trying to field our questions. I appreciate your efforts.
Point of order. Madam Acting Chairman, if you will officially close.
Certainly.
Public comment, because I believe everybody that had a chance to speak has, it doesn't sound like there's anything new and different.
Certainly, yes.
If you'll officially close that, so that the council can now officially discuss it among ourselves.
It's my rookie mistake, I will now officially close public comments.
No problem, I'm not trying to put you out of spot.
No, I thank, I thank you for your advice there. Counsel, anyone else have questions for Marcus?
Okay, now are we at council?
We are at council. Council comments.
Here's...
Counselperson? Azar.
Couple of things. First of all, I appreciate all the work that you've done to bring this to our attention. However, my concern, I live in that area, and I know what these neighbors are talking about as far as traffic and not being able to see once you get up the hill and turning right and getting in and out. And that's bad now. We've got a casino coming. I don't know if any of this has factored in the, in that there's going to be a lot more traffic going that way, we hope, in another year. And if that's the case, it's going to be a lot more, for lack of a better word, dangerous. You had said something about the developer has to prove that it's safe before you'll, something like that you had mentioned, I don't, I didn't hear all that.
The, the recommendation we made, and the, for the condition to area planning and the condition that area planning passed on, was that, I mean, first and foremost, we wanted to eliminate the possibility of a left turn. It's in no way safe to make a left turn right there. That's very clear and very obvious. So we wanted to make a recommendation for right in, right out. And the second part of that condition is that the city engineering department got the opportunity to review this driver approach, which gives us a little more, a little more leeway in our, our review. The city code's not very clear on review aspects, and this would give us a chance to look at it a little bit closer and, and make sure it's safe. It's, it's got to be safe, they're going to have to show us that it is safe, they're going to have to show us that they have the site distance. The site distance needed to make a safe right-hand turn is 430 feet, and that's measured 14 and a half feet back from the edge of the traveled way, from a height of three and a half feet off the ground, to a target that's 4.25 feet off the ground.
So basically, they're going to go by what your recommendation is to make it safe. It's not going to be their decision whether it's safe or not, it's going to be your decision.
If they would like a permit to build, they would have to show us something that meets our requirements.
What concerns me also is going back to what NDOT did years ago, and I don't know how many years ago that was, that back whenever that was done, they had specifically said that it was not safe. And that's before any traffic, a lot of traffic now, and even more traffic in another year. So if it was not safe then, what makes it safe now with more cars, more traffic? Nothing's changed, other than that.
That's a great question. It certainly is not safe for a left turn. It may be safe for a right turn, and that's, that's why we included the second part of that condition, that they're going to have to show us that they can do it safely, that they can hit that 430-foot side distance. That's, that's part of the, that comes from the Green Book, the geometric design of highway from the American Association of State and Highway Traffic Officials. So they're going to have to prove to us that they can get that side distance, that they can get that side distance year-round, whether the grass is tall or short, and that would provide a safe right turn. And this right turn's also going to have to be a structural diverted right turn to where someone can't just pull up and make a left.
Okay. Couple more questions and I'll yield. 32 units on that piece of land, and I'm not an engineer, I'm not a contractor, I have no idea. I'm just a citizen that kind of looks at land and thinks to myself, 32 units on that piece of land seems like an awful lot in that space. And again, I'm not a contractor, I don't know the, how big they're going to be. Secondly, who, and this might be a question for Richard, who are you, are they actually, you're talking about, we need more housing, which I agree, I agree with that 100%. Who is the target tenants that you, that they're trying to attract? Business people, Rose Hallman students?
Well, you, obviously, Rose Hallman professors, Rose Hallman teachers, I'm sorry, professors and students.
Can you go to the microphone, Richard?
We're looking for the casino employees who don't want to be in a massive complex, that also maybe have, still have ties to Indianapolis. We're also, you know, I don't want to disagree with Mr. Mowers, because I think it gives us a good idea that, you know, although it appears to be a dangerous area, it's not as bad. And I think if, that is much louder, thank you, Michelle. And if you were to allow Mr. Mauer to kind of elaborate on the, the Safe Streets grant, the initial review looks like that this area isn't even a high priority compared to other parts of the city. But one thing that's also changed, and that we've learned, I kind of brought this up the, the last time I was in front of you, is we're kind of in a different world where people don't, not everybody goes to work at 8 o'clock. A lot of people only leave their house. And as long as you have good internet, you can work from anywhere. So I think there's going to be a target, as I said, for the, for the Rose Hallman crowd, even for the, and for the new development there. You've also got, you know, loss of our resources is coming in now, up north. I mean, there's just so much going on, and, and the, the thought is to target all of that. And also, you have a lot of people who are not wanting to maintain a yard, they're not wanting to deal with the big house anymore. They want to consolidate, the kids are going, and that's kind of the target audience. I would, again, if you look at the housing study that was just done, this, this meets a lot of the, the requirements, a lot of the needs, and this price range of 1,700 and 1,900 is, well works within our economics of our community. I realize that it seems high, but the reality is that is a, that is a very doable rent for this type of facility.
You're saying 1,700 and 1,900 rent?
Yeah.
Let me ask you this.
And I don't know what the sale price is.
It's fine.
I don't know what the sale price is.
What's the size of these units? I didn't, I don't know if I saw it in here.
The two-bedroom is $1,390, and the three-bedroom is $3,390. Both are $1,390, just different configurations. That was in your packet I gave you last time, it shows that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I yield.
Anyone else? Counsel? Counselperson Elliot?
Yeah. In 1981, my wife and I built a house in Woodshire, in the very back street of Woodshire. I can go to the northwest corner of my lot, and that corner borders Woodridge, the south side of Woodridge. From there, I could walk about 100 feet west, and I'm on Park Lane, and then I could walk north about 50 or 60 yards, and I'm on Gardendale. So it's that, I can monitor the Gardendale traffic practically from my backyard. In addition to that, my wife grew up on Arcadia Drive, in the heart of Woodridge, whose parents lived there all their lives, and just recently, her mother passed in 2022. So I've made more trips in and out of Woodridge, I'm sure, than all the rest of you combined over many years. Now, I know what I see. years. Now, I know what I see, okay? I see very large lots in Woodridge, very low housing density as a result. I see hardly ever a parked car on the street. I see two-car garages. I see two-car driveways, and I see very little foot and bicycle traffic. And I know that contradicts what some of these people have said, but I doubt if there's a safer neighborhood in the city than what that neighborhood is. Contrasting that with the traffic that I deal with on West Lauren, can miss all the parked cars and watch for all the kids and get by the pool and, you know, get back to my house safely. I mean, that's, that's just the way I see it. Some people may not like those comments. I did make a phone call to the city engineer's office, and I don't think Marcus was available that time. I was trying to get the 2022 traffic count number, which he gave me is 17,300, which I think matches. But he also gave me one for 2009 that was 23,600. For 2013, that was 22,100. And for 2020, that was 18,000. So, if you want to say traffic has increased on Wabash Avenue, I think that's inaccurate based upon these traffic counts. I think if I read your report right, it's 186 additional trips per day, 93 in, 93 out, basically, on, related to this project. So, that's 15.5 trips per 12 hours of daylight, and maybe a peak hour number of trips of about 90 or 92 that I see here. So, 186 additional vehicles going into and out of that development. When we, there is a count already of 17,300 on Wabash, and used to be 23,600 15 years ago, just does not seem like a lot to me. My preference, I don't think Keen Lane is very safe for pedestrian traffic or bike traffic, just because parts of it, there's ditches. You're walking on the road, the most, for a lot of that, not for all of it, but for a lot of that, that part's not safe. But there are other ways for the people of Woodridge to get to Demming Park, and that's by using the street that I just mentioned, Park Lane, which is the one I use to get over to Demming Park. That exits out behind the baseball field. It's about 100 yards in the grass up to where the back gate is. So, I guess I just don't see the significant traffic concerns, which appears to be one of the major concern that the residents of Woodridge have. The drainage, I'm an accountant, not an engineer. I can't begin to, you know, pass any judgment on that, although it does sound like we don't have much information related to that, which is the issue that Todd raised. And with that, I'll yield.
Thank you. Counselperson Crossen?
Yes. I think what Earl has described is a matter of perception, and clearly, people don't perceive it all the same way. In terms of traffic, I don't disagree with him greatly about the foot traffic within Woodridge and certainly Woodshire. But, and I don't live in the neighborhood, but I do go there at least three times a week, and I'm outside watching people go back and forth for an hour and a half or so each of those times. I do probably about two-thirds of that, those visits, go down Wabash and turn off of Keen Lane to get to where I'm going. And I would say that my concerns in terms of traffic aren't so much within Woodridge, but along Wabash and in that area. I do think 186 trips a day does significantly add to those numbers. So, I guess we just perceive that differently, Earl. I do also appreciate Counselperson Nation's comments about the drainage. And I'm looking at one of the drawings, mockups of the 32 units that would be put in there. Should a onsite retention be required, I don't hardly see where that could happen in that. And that concerns me. And I get, and I know, we don't know yet whether or not that would be required by the city, but I do think that that's an issue as well. I am glad to hear that our city engineer, and by the way, Marcus, thank you for that information, but I do, I am glad to see you, hear you say that there's no way you would permit a left turn out of this egress onto Wabash. But I did, one of the things I did in preparation for voting on this was I parked on, right up next to the property, there's a little place you can pull off there after having come in the correct way, the correct way, the one way. And I got out and just looked over the property some. And again, I just, it boggles my mind how that can comfortably house 32 units. But I also kind of walked down the hill and looked at the current egress for Kinder Music and the dentist's office and Keen Lane and where the various small area places that could come out and other entrance onto Wabash. And I suppose by data, you may be able to say that that can be done safely. I don't know what that means exactly, safely, but I do trust that you have done your homework, Marcus. I'm not doubting that for a second. So, I think in some kind of data configuration, you can say that could work. But when I look at people pulling in on Keen, going out somewhere between Kinder Music and Keen, and then a few dozen feet on down the road, going in and out of Kinder Music and Dr., is it Dr. Stately's office, it boggles my mind how that is not substantially less safe than what is there today. So, with that, I yield, and thanks.
Counselperson Loudermilk?
Marcus, I believe that the day I seen this zoning, I called you immediately, didn't I?
Yes.
And I appreciate everything you have done in talking to me on the phone. And I've talked to Richard many times. And my first question was about drainage. We talked about that. So, my question to you, since everybody else has asked the other, do we already have a drainage issue in Woodridge?
I'd love to answer that, but first, I've been waiting for one second to talk. Richard may have put some words in my mouth that this area's not a priority. Safety is a priority, and the study we do will look at the severity and frequency of crashes. But on to drainage. So, generally, the east side has a lot of drainage problems. In this specific area, due to the hill, there's not necessarily a pooling or standing water problem. They will have some difficulty with drainage. We would anticipate onsite retention. We will probably provide them with a rate that they could release at. If the intention is to go to the storm sewer, we'll determine what capacity is left. We'll give them a rate they can release at. We'll require a designed storm, probably the 25-year designed storm, the standard for most developments in the city. They will have to collect the 25-year post development calculated runoff, release it at the rate we give them, and they would have to store the rest and slowly release it over time to meet that requirement.
And I don't doubt that your office would do the homework on that, make sure it was done correct. But I'm kind of like Counselperson Nation, there was nothing really presented to us about it. And I'm not sure about the rest of them, but I've received from a couple of people I know that live behind that area, absolute pictures and costs that they've done because of the drainage issues they already have back there. So, I would hate to see a problem. And then, as far as the safety, again, I've probably not drove it as much as Counselperson Elliott now, but I grew up out east, and I drove that way every day to work and to college and back, and four and five trips. And through those years, several years ago, unfortunately, I had a friend killed in a fatality out there. So, in that stretch. So, for me, I get, I still go that way from north end out east, yelling at my husband, "Slow down" all the time because I'm afraid of someone turning right in front of you, or you can't stop, or the speed. So, for me, I still, I understand there might be less vehicles, but the casino's not open yet. And I trust your study, but I still have some concerns with the safety of that area.
Yeah, I would agree. So, I mean, you could see there is, sorry, is it?
Go ahead.
There is a heat map of accident locations, and it's a bit misleading because it shows this area as a lower compared to others. That's why I mentioned that we would look at the severity and the frequency crashes. Most of the city has a 30 mile an hour speed limit. Most of the city travels roughly 30 mile an hour. There's generally a lower frequency, or a lower severity to those. So, I would expect this corridor to be one of the set corridors. We're going to rely on, we'll look to hire a consultant that is an expert in the field of traffic safety with the, if we get the grant, which I hope we do, and I feel good about. And we're going to have them look at all these corridors and choose which ones are, you know, the most important and what we can do to do that. I know that's a long-term solution, and we're talking about a short-term problem here. So, again, going back to the conditions that were imposed on that, the initial intent was, we immediately say no to left. The second intent with the condition is that we get a little more authority to review this in a way that we can look at safety. They're going to have to show us that they have a site distance that meets the published standards, whether that means the drive approach moves one way or another, or there's a potential retaining wall for sections. Simply keeping grass mode is not really adequate because that's real easy to not do. So, we'll have to see something that shows us that there's a way to do that with the proposed layout, and it's going to, you know, have to be something that they can prove to us. So, most of the burden, all of the burden when it comes to development lies on the developer to prove to us that they can meet their needs, whether it be drainage or safety when they come out here.
Okay. And I have one last comment, and this to Richard. Richard, I'm well aware of the housing that's needed in Vigo County. I've sat through those meetings with Thrive also, and that's my full-time job, deal with that a lot. So, I'm well aware of the housing that's needed. I will say one thing, though. I think that those apartments is going to draw where you're going to have two or three Rose Hallman students living in one apartment. Did your study take into account three people living there and going back and forth to school?
So, as far as the trips for the impact study, it just used a published number for townhomes or condos. It's kind of a nationwide average. It's kind of hard to determine who's going to live where or what. So, the best method that we have is to use a standard number.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Okay. Counselperson Garrison?
I'll make mine short. I think on this particular issue, I'm most concerned tonight on safety. You know, I'm just looking at this map, and I'm just thinking about all the traffic going through. And I'm thinking, if this is not approved, we won't know how many injuries were prevented or how many lives are saved. How would we know? But I think if it is approved, and they do build, and people are going to, they're going to try and get in and out, I think we'll absolutely know how many lives were lost. So, I'm just going to, I'm going to stay with safety on this one. I yield.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments? Is anyone willing to make a motion?
Madam President?
Counselperson Nation?
I move for approval of Special Ordinance Number 11, 2023.
We have a motion on the floor made by Counselperson Nation.
Second.
For approval. Do we have a second? Second by Counselperson Elliott?
Roll call.
Michelle, ready for a roll call vote, please?
Counselperson Oller.
Yes.
Counselperson Azar.
No.
Counselperson Crossen.
No.
Counselperson DeBonne.
abstain.
Counselperson Elliott.
Yes.
Counselperson Garrison.
No.
Counselperson Loudermilk.
No.
Counselperson Nation.
No.
Counselperson Bowland. I'm sorry, I had to rewrite everything.
Pardon me?
I had to rewrite your names. Counselperson Bowland.
No.
That's two yes, I'm, two yes, one abstention, and six no.
Thank you very much.
Okay, motion failed. Return the gavel to Curtis, thankfully.
Before we move on, real quick, I want to first thank Councilwoman Bowland for taking over for me during that item. And I want to thank everybody in the audience for the patience during this item as well. Having said that, I would like to go ahead and thank each of you for a little bit more patience as we go ahead and have a 10-minute break. So, we'll be back in about 10 minutes.
Hi. Michelle, I think you might be sore with the water.
Water plant was hit by a high-strength discharge from a local industry. This discharge totally disabled the plant. It took us about three weeks to recover from this. These are all costs that were associated with this discharge. The industry reimbursed us for everything. So, they gave us a check. That was deposited, and now I'm just asking for this money to be placed back in the lines so that, you know, it was all very unexpected and so we didn't plan for these expenses. So, I would just like to put that money back where it came from so that we can, you know, use it for what we intended it for.
Thank you. Is there any comment from anybody in the public on appropriation six, 2023? Counsel?
Mr. President?
Counsel Person Crossen.
If there's no further discussion, I would move approval of appropriation six, 2023.
We have to take action this evening?
Oh, I would move that we vote to take action on appropriation six, 2023.
Second.
It has been moved by Counsel Woman Crossen, seconded by Counsel Person Nation, that we take action on appropriation six, 2023 this evening. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we can take action on that this evening.
Mr. President?
Counsel Woman Crossen.
I now move that we take act- that we approve appropriation number six, 2023.
Second.
All right, it has been, uh, motion's been made by Counsel Woman Crossen, seconded by Counsel Man Nation, that we approve appropriation six, 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item.
Appropriation seven, 2023. Five million, six hundred thousand dollars from ARPA Fund Number 0199 to contractual services, 0199-0006-0343210, 010 for one million dollars to contractual services, 0199-0006-0332010 for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to donation for capital improvement, 0199-0006-03432028 for one million dollars to donation for capital improvement, 0199-0006-03432028 for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to principal on notes/leases, 0199-0006-03439178 for two million, four hundred and five thousand dollars to interest on notes/leases, 0199-0006-03439179 for five thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and to purchase of equipment, 0199-0006-04444010 for thirty-one thousand dollars. Do not forget, you have to vote to take action.
Petitioner?
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Mayor Duke Bennett. We've brought appropriation seven, 2023, to you to be our second appropriation for ARPA funds that we received a couple of years ago. Everything in here, which I'll go through each of these individually and give you just a brief overview of each one here in a second, but these are all things that are part of the buckets that we created, that we've talked about basically all year here this year, even the end of last year. There's nothing that's a surprise here in any way. It's a mix of city-related expenses and then two specific community projects that they'll be presenting on very shortly here. So, there's nothing new, I guess, is the best way to put this. I, I know that there's only one meeting this month, and you need to vote, to vote on it. I'm asking you to do that tonight if you can. You know, if you don't, carry it off to August, but these are gonna start coming at a more rapid pace as we move forward with other pieces of the ARPA as it, as it happens. These things are ready and ready for action, and so that's why I brought this to you, just to kinda get it out of the way as we move into have more time to be able to debate things that are not so typical, if you will, maybe. The first-line item for contractual services, if I refer you back to your executive summary that I gave you on June 27th, you, you may not have that with you, that's okay, but I broke out what each of these are. And so, first-line item is a million dollars of the five-million-dollar bucket that we had proposed for the Parks Department. We have four projects that we are in design phase for. Hertz Rose Park, Fairbanks Park, Ray Park, and Deming Park, pool upgrade. So, the, these funds, if they're appropriated, would be used to reimburse expenses that we've had so far this year with our consultants for these projects, which then frees up the money in the contractual services line item to be used for construction or demolition moving forward, and I'll talk about a couple of specifics here in a second. It's moving these projects along. These are beginning to move towards the bid phase, and so, I'll just pick Ray Park first. We will be going to bid in August, and construction will begin in November, late November, when the course closes. We will have plenty of money out of this million dollars to pay for all the remaining expenses, which there aren't many left now, where Dan Sanders is our architect on that. He's about at ninety-five percent, so he's got about five percent more work to do over the coming weeks, and then we'll be going out to bid. When the bids come back, then we'll know if the project's within the scope of what we think it is or not in order to accept a bid and then begin construction. So, we would be able to use some of these funds to be able to advance that project in November and December of this year. The second one is Hertz Rose Park. We are just now moving into the design phase. He's working on that now, our consultant. The goal with this project would be to finish the design, since it's a smaller park, by October, first of October, get it bid by the end of this year, and start construction in the spring of next year. So, we've got, we need to finish the design work. We're gonna do some demolition this fall, hopefully, and so the funds will go towards that. On the Fairbanks Park project, we just had an update meeting today regarding that. You know, it's a much bigger project with many, many moving pieces to it, but we need additional funds to begin the design of Phase One, which Phase One will primarily be the playground and the sunken area where the art, piece of artwork is, and some minor updates to the amphitheater. That will be what we consider Phase One, but it'll take us probably six months or so to design that, because we're looking at the big picture of the park, but to drill that down to Phase One. And then the last piece being Deming Park. We have not hired a consultant quite yet for that, to do that design work or the expansion of the pool. You'll hear more about that as we move forward, but we wanna get ratio architects online yet this year to begin that design work. So, that's what is encompassed of this. You know, we probably won't spend the full million dollars, but we could, depending on the timing of bids and construction, bids, demo, construction. But whatever funds that we don't spend, then we'll revert back to ARPA, and we'll have to reappropriate them next year, unless we're under contract with something. We could, you know, still work with a piece of this, but we'll just have to see how it shakes out, but I need those funds to be able to take these things to the next step. The second-line item is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for contractual services, similar to what we did in the first appropriation, to have money to pay R.J.L. Solutions and Baker Tilly as they guide us through this process. The accountability on this, as we've talked about many times, is more than significant. We have to do everything right, and we have to track it for, you know, the coming years. It will be altered on a regular basis, on every penny we spend, to make sure it complies with all the federal guidelines, and so, I'm sure we'll need a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it won't be more than that, so I suspect some of that will revert back at the end of the year and will reappropriate next year, probably another hundred and fifty thousand or more, depending on what we need. The next two, I will, I'm gonna let you guys go ahead and present, so I have Hughes up next, so we'll let them talk about their project, and I'll comment on it at the end when I wrap. Dr. Curtis?
Yes, sir. I'm Deborah Curtis, President of Indiana State University. Thank you, thank you, thank you for giving this opportunity to chat with you about the project that we're bringing before you, and I wanna start by saying, these last couple of hours sitting here, I have learned what really difficult but important jobs you have on this council. These are huge decisions you make, and I'm very grateful for each of your service on this group. I'm happy to stand here today to say to you, we have a unique opportunity right now in this community to be able to take some dollars and put them towards some really important, and I don't think we're up, are we? No? So, you have handouts in front of you, so we can certainly go forward with the slides that are in front of you. So, if you will flip past that title page there, onto the one that says, "That is the highest quality and affordable childcare." This is a challenge in the Wabash Valley, and it's a challenge in many communities around the country right now, and nothing has shown us how important that is than the pandemic recently. The challenge is that many families have had to return people back for, and not being able to have access to high-quality, affordable childcare. And we know for a fact, when we take a look at the learning loss for children during the pandemic time, it's never more important than now to make sure that every five-year-old goes to school ready to learn. Every third grade, reading at grade level, all of those measures begin in those birth to preschool years. Indiana State University has promised that we've invested in a high-quality Level Four early childhood care facility for quite a few years, but this opportunity to take ARPA dollars and direct them toward the huge need for us in our community is really a once-in-a- very-long-time opportunity, so we're grateful for you to take a look at this plan. If you'll go to the slide that says, "Indiana State's Early Childhood Education Center Expansion," we are accredited by MACI, as well as by the Department of Family and Children's Services of the state of Indiana. Our current location is at Carrington and Third, and we are at capacity with eighty-six children. We have a waiting list of anywhere of sixty to seventy more, but we are landlocked in that facility. We cannot grow any further there. We maintain and support the work of, because the community needs this. This is not a moneymaker for Indiana State University, it's a commitment to our community. So, we work very hard to keep this service as affordable and available as possible in our community. Until we can get to a bigger space, we're not gonna be able to expand that learning. The other piece of this, though, we want you to think out here, tracks here, not only space and seats, but the high-quality experience for children in these early year-old schools. At the back of your packet, there's an article from the Brookings Institute, and it puts forward in very beautiful pages, respond, as a matter of fact, the message that it's not just a place for your child to be. It's a place for your child to be that has a high-quality program, and we talk about it in these Level Four level schools. That's what we already serve in our early childhood center, and what our goal is to not only expand that to more children and families at Indiana State, but then to expand our impact through curriculum workshops, outreach to other daycare providers in this community. Our dream would be that everybody has a Level Four childcare facility in this community. I heard some data recently about a piece here that we serve about three thousand children in this community right now, and we need about five thousand spaces. So, it isn't one of us that's gonna solve the capacity piece, but if we bring all of us up to the level we need to be, we will be able to accomplish this in our community. If you look at the university's commitment to the project, that next slide, this is the Chestnut Building. It used to be the home of our nursing programs until those programs moved over to the new facility in Health and Human Services. We have been using this facility, I usually call it our Motel Six. So, when we're renovating somewhere, we move folks into that space. Well, we have purposely in the last year or two determined to find other space on campus to use for that purpose, because we will be doing more renovation, as, as you've heard about, the sixty-six-million-dollar project coming to enhance our Bayley College of Engineering Technology Facility, and make this space available for us to grow, move, and grow our early childhood education program. The beauty of this spot is it's right next door to the Bay College of Education Facility, which will allow greater interaction of faculty and research and workforce, as well as student participation and engagement with the other presidents of the higher education institutions in the community. At least three of us have a need for clinical spaces, but Rose Home and not offering those programs, they have a need to attract the faculty that they want to bring here, to have these high-quality early childhood services available. So, we are all in on saying, this would be a great place to go. Our value of that facility right now is valued at nine point three million dollars, and the university is willing to dedicate that facility, to expand our work not only to serve more families, but then to engage in bringing up other daycare facilities in the community forward. We have determined that with a study, and by the way, you'll see at the back of your packet, that the preliminary work by ARPA Design for this first piece, for us to expand to begin with, we're gonna do the first two floors. That came in at six point five million dollars in their plan. So, you can well imagine that we're going to multiple sources to be able to facilitate that. The goal, of course, once we get into that space with those first two levels, is to do the other two as well, and extremely well expand our capacity, but also expand our capacity for research and cutting-edge research that we will disseminate throughout the community through workshops and aid to other daycare providers. The next slide that you have talks about the funding schools, is that we're sitting right now, and it really is like putting a puzzle together in this piece. We already were able to secure a ready grant for one million, and I thank the mayor and all those who were involved in moving that forward to bring those dollars to the Wabash Valley. The Digo County Board approved a three-million-dollar piece for this work. We are coming to you to ask for one million towards this project, and then we are also in the process of applying for grant through the Lilly Endowment for another one point five million, to round this out. I wanna focus on that piece for a moment, because we are in the process of writing that right now. We received a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar planning grant from Lilly, and what we built into that piece, which will be a part of this progress, is we're working with R.J.L. Solutions and Ivy Tech to develop a Wabash Valley and regional strategic plan for early childhood development in the Wabash Valley. The intention of this is probably gonna be about a ten-month to twelve-month process, is to engage all the constituents in the community who provide these services, implant of what we need, who needs what, where, and how do we deliver this high-quality in-service to daycare providers so that we can bring everybody up to that level? The ultimate goal of every five-year-old goes to school ready to learn. So, that's where we are right now in this process. So, our vision, and I will refer you one more time to, that's the next slide, to the Brookings Institute piece at the back, we really need to be intentional about what children are indeed to do in every level. For example, Indiana State's executive director, and by the way, I'm pointing over here, so you didn't get a chance to be careful, our executive director is here with us, Holly Kurtz, and her daydream, wonderful worker. I should also introduce my other colleagues on the far end, Rex Kendall, well-known, he's Chief of Staff for me, what we mean. And then our pro vice, Dr. Chris Olson, who is overseeing all of our academic programs, who does such good work with this, this activity as well. They are also peerless resources to share it with you, that it's not just a commitment to growing seats. We've gotta grow seats all over the community, not just at Indiana State, but we are committed to growing them at Indiana State. It's the high-quality piece in the curriculum that's involved at every level of child development for us, for, really, six weeks, to going to school, going to kindergarten, and every step in that process of making sure those children engage with one another and have the opportunities to grow them, as well as a whole stratified representation of this community there. So, we already have programs where if your income is low, your cost to come is lower. There was a question that was lifted up earlier that we wanted to be prepared, so we're wanting to tell you, right now, the university's employees or students comprise about forty percent of the students we serve. Right now, we serve sixty percent of the students in the broader community. We believe as we grow our capacity, it's mostly been community members grow at that time, so we want you to know that that's a mission of ours as well, is to grow the amount of students that are not directly related to the employees or students at the, at the community. This is back to this discussion to about the Level Four. This is really difficult to achieve. When you go back to that six point five million dollar price tag, we cannot take a college classroom building and just put those kiddos in there, and it's all good. All of our accreditation requires that facilities are designed to work with children from infant to preschool, as well as some of the outside activities as well. You have to have the appropriate playground space with the appropriate equipment, the ratio of teachers to children, and those kinds of things are all figured into this process of growing. That's what's really important to maintain that Level Four approval. So, if you'll go on to the comprehensive strategic plan, this is the one I mentioned that we are already beginning that with Ivy Tech and R.J.L. and Indiana State, to start gathering people together and develop a plan that will serve us and this community for a long time to come. Indiana State is taking the lead in it. We've communicated very directly with Lilly Endowment to assure them. We have multiple grants from Lilly Endowment, and they've been very, very supportive of us, so we really believe with this two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand planning, we'll be able to achieve the next one point five million from them this fall. Matter of fact, right now, we're amidst of facilitating a nine-million-dollar grant from them that we had before, so I'm pretty confident that they really believe that this kind of collaboration that was coming out of this strategic plan piece is really gonna result in wonderful benefits for this community and the children of this community. You'll take a look at the next slide, the timeline that we're talking about. There are many, many steps for us to be able to move forward with this process. Certainly, right now, we're trying to make sure that we get all of our funds secured, including the Lilly dollars, by December of this year. That's their timeline. Now, we're gonna submit by September, and then they will make their decision by December, and that's hoping with your approval for the one million, we will have those pieces in to then start through the rest of this timeline. We, of course, must get approval from our board of trustees. We need to get a complete programming, schematic, design, construction documents ready, but you're gonna see a couple of high-level pieces here later in the packet. We are required to go to the Indiana Commission for Higher Education anytime we spend dollars at that level and get their approval. That would be intended early spring. And then, of course, the State Budget Committee. Doesn't matter where the dollars come from, if a state institution spends more than two million dollars, you must get State Budget Committee approval. Then in May, we would be receiving bids on this project, get that work going as quickly as possible, and then be completed by May of twenty-five, when we can expand that capacity. Keep in mind that even as that's a construction piece, we'll already be working on a strategic planning piece. We'll already be engaging with daycare providers in this community to help them get to a Level Four approval. Our tracking measures that we will be sharing with you, certainly will be expanding our capacity, we will complete the renovation, and of course, complete and start implementing that strategic plan until we're done. You see a little bit of a schematic later on at a high level. If I'm a left of this drawing that shows, shows you much like a map, the, the north, if we're saying the top of the page is north, the north side of that is the Bay College of Education Building, so this is located just to the south of that. These circle drives there and all are perfect for drop-off and pickup, and then we'll be repurposing some of those areas there for outside playgrounds. There's actually a graduated classroom in that building on the first floor that in this design there, intended to level out and prepare a nice, great, big indoor playground so that when weather is not good, there are places for the teachers to bring students as well. And then these two, to the right of that page are the two floors and the way they would be redesigned. Of course, water is important, child size, all kinds of facilities need to be in place, as well as the appropriate kind of space for children in that environment. When we go after, which will be later on, the next two floors, we're biting off a bigger piece of this with the six point five. This will get the HVAC all the way through. This will also get an expanded elevator. Have anyone ever been in that building, the nursing building?
It's been a long time.
Have you ever used the elevator in there?
I'm not going in any elevator.
It's like the side of this podium, pretty much, and we're gonna be able to expand that so we get greater access to the other floors in the building as well. So, that's where we're at right now, and as a matter of fact, if you'll take a look at that fifty-thousand-foot art-designed idea of that cost, that's the work that we've had preliminarily done. And I would happy to invite Holly Ford with me, because she's the expert. She's the one who knows all the details about all the good work that is done there, and she's also doing a tremendous amount of work beyond our campus in this community and early childhood, so we'll share this and open up questions.
After we get through the entire appropriation, I will ask anyone from the audience if they have any questions, but at this moment, right now, I will ask, does anybody on the council have any questions?
Holly gotta present first.
Oh, were you going to present anything, Holly, or?
Yeah.
I'm happy to be answering questions.
Okay. Okay. Counsel Person Nation?
Mr. President, first, thank you. I think this is a great opportunity for us as a community. Just some random questions that I thought of as I, as you were presenting. In Phase Two, how many more seats for children?
Well, well, in, in that aspect, really, the sky is the limit. It depends on what the results of the strategic plan would lead us to. We are looking at different types of care. There are several identified needs in our community, and so I think what, from my perspective, what would really be impactful is being able to address those identified needs. So, for example, if the community is looking for a school-age piece, then we would look to use that space to appropriately meet that need. If the community is looking for a rest bed or a drop-in piece, we would utilize that space ideally to meet that need. So, I really think it's a little premature to specifically identify the use of that space. I think the most responsible and responsive action would be to get that community feedback through that strategic plan first.
And then the, the next question's about that strategic plan and Ivy Tech's role in it. Will they end up, will they, Ivy Tech, will they have more seats per kid, for kids too as part of this?
So, Ivy Tech does not currently have a childcare program.
I know.
They do not have an onsite program, so they're exponentially, I mean, that's, that would be there.
Well, I'm gonna say a little bit about that as well, so as we worked with them to help us develop the strategic plan, the Ivy Tech system has already accomplished a bigger, much bigger Lilly grant than we're going after to reach throughout the system, and Carahope will be one of those. Chancellor Crooks, I did, Leanne, I'll go that way. Her vision is, they're right down there by that industrial park, they have unusual hour needs down there for families, right? So, she's interacting with those businesses in the industrial park to say, when you partner with Ivy Tech, let's put up a facility down there that perhaps has overnight hours for those families with those kinds of hours. There are interesting models they're working on, so that's what they intend to fold in their Ivy Tech piece of the larger pie from Lilly to do some of that work. So, that will be a complimentary piece. You know, Holly stepped on something there that I think is really important for us to talk about. Right now, we cannot do drop-off care, we don't have the space for it, so the children who come to our facility come for all week long. That, that's what we can do. This expansion for us, and we would hope that would make that more available around the community, I, I work Tuesday, Thursday, I only need Tuesday, Thursday, I don't need Monday through Friday. We can't accommodate that now. We would be able to accommodate that if this strategic plan tells us, here's the need for that. So, it, it's a bit of, a year from now, we should probably be able to pretty well answer that question.
Okay. And last, the last one, when I was reviewing the propos, the program before I came to the meeting, I had a presentation, I took a hard look at the drawings. To me, that the nursing building has always been a windowless box. Will you be adding windows?
We certainly will be talking with the designers about that when we get to that stage, because we all talk about that as well, putting kiddos in and nothing but cinder blocks and other kind of things, so we will be talking about that.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Counsel Personola?
So, I know you brought that up in part of it about, there's a lot of Indiana State, you know, families that have kids there and stuff. With this expansion, will there be any kind of percentage that is just for our community kids that aren't, you know, already six percent?
So, of course, we're eyeballing this right now, but I will tell you, when we, right now are about forty percent, I can tell you that we are not gonna have a bigger demand at the university than that. So, when our capacity grows and we stay at about that level, it's gonna be a bigger piece for the community. I really believe we'll go beyond sixty percent to the community.
But you're not gonna reserve so many for just our community kids?
Well, maybe that'll come out of this strategic plan when we see what the need is, because I really believe there are enough facilities around this community that just need that help in bringing their programs up to a level. And frankly, you know, for some people, it's geography. You know, not everybody's gonna find that convenient to drive on the campus, and they're gonna want something more close to where they live.
Yeah, and I understand that.
So, we've got some deserts here in town for, for childcare.
What's the average, I know it goes by income and stuff, but Honorable Park, what's the average for, for childcare there?
Sure, it, so it depends on the age of the child and the type of care that you're seeking. So, market rate in Digo County hovers around three hundred and fifty dollars per infant per week, and that's a rate that has been established historically by the state of Indiana, looking at the cost associated with providing care. One thing that has been incredibly helpful for program administrators like myself, the state has recently acknowledged that there's a better metric to use to better capture that, and as a result of that, on August first, our reimbursement rates will increase to keep pace with that. So, all of that to say, the state is paying attention to
So all of that to say, the state is paying attention to the out-of-pocket expenses for families, and they're working really hard to incentivize providers to work more closely with families, particularly for those lower income families that need the support. So to answer your question right now, our fees range anywhere from about $120 per week, that's part-time for a preschool student, to $242 per week, that's full-time for an infant placement.
I know. Councilperson Nola.
Yeah, I, to prepare for this discussion, I talked to a representative at the United Way because I know they had been working with, in this vein. And they have a Quality Childcare Initiative grant that I believe you're very involved with that project from?
That's right. I do co-chair Success by Six for the United Way.
Okay. And basically, what that was about was helping upgrade other facilities in the city to Level Three and Level Four. And I think this, what we'll have here will only facilitate that upgrading of other facilities to Level Three and Level Four, other childcare facilities in the county with the goal to be increasing that number of quality seats as fast as we can, as quick as we can, to help deal with that need and result in a more productive workforce. And I also was, observed that a lot of that, if you can solve childcare issues for people, then you'll have a lot more better employees because they can then deal with working as opposed to their childcare problems. So you're proving, you're lengthening the candle at two ends there in terms of what the benefit is. So with that, I'll yield.
Do we have any, Councilwoman Crosson?
Yeah. Just in the spirit of full disclosure, I have two grandchildren who have attended the ISU childcare program, and it's been fabulous. One of them's last day is tomorrow, so. But just in the spirit of disclosure. But as a parent who has needed childcare from the beginning of becoming a parent, I know how important this is to families and to children, although I haven't been on the Success by Six group at United Way, have worked carefully. I am also co-chair of the Strong Neighborhoods or Impact Council there. And we talk a lot about the need for families to have good childcare. So there are a lot of crossovers there. In a former life, I served in the state of Ohio on the childcare licensing enforcement panel for the state of Ohio and know how important it is for us to lift up people who are trying to provide this childcare to our children but just don't have quite the resources to allow them to do that. And I'm so happy that in the 30-plus years since I did that work, that there's been a lot more attention by the state, all states, including Indiana, I'm glad to hear, and that we have groups like the Lilly Foundation who are around to help us do that. Earl, your comment that if we lift up childcare, we lift up families and we lift up employers is absolutely not only intuitive almost, but it's borne out by all the data. And you and I talking about data again. So anyway, I absolutely love the scope of this project. I'm very happy to hear more details on the part that goes beyond just doing the building and adding more children. I did have a quick, maybe a question, maybe a comment. You talked about the cost per child and what your current costs are. And when you say it goes from X amount to a part-time student to 200 and some for an infant, just for the purpose of information for the public, that, am I right in saying that infant care is always more expensive care?
That's correct.
No matter who's providing that?
That's correct. Your market rate for infants currently, and like I said, those numbers are about to change, but currently are around $315 per infant per week, as set by the state, where your preschool rate is closer to that $240.
And that is in large part because of staffing requirements for those ages?
That's right. So ratio is much higher at the preschool age. Beyond age three, the ratio goes to 1 to 10. One provider herds 10 children. With an infant, the ratio is held at 1 to 4. So one provider herds four children.
And if you can, I don't know if you can or not, but in our community, I would assume that there's a great need for increased infant care.
Absolutely. Capacity is most greatly needed at our infant, at our infant age group, so six weeks to 12 months. Again, it's because it's the hardest and least cost-effective opportunity to provide. Frankly, if providers are looking at, you know, bottom line, they're making money, which many of our home providers, that is their sole income, you know, they shy away from infant care just because of the cost associated with providing. And it's much more financially lucrative to go after the free K dollars just due to staffing, or to lose staffing. So infant care, I would say, is under highest demand coupled with then toddler care. So 12 to 24-month age.
Okay. For now, you.
Thank you.
Any further questions to this piece of the appropriation? Councilwoman Bulling?
Just to clarify, and I know you already said, we're going to renovate the first two floors initially, and then the long-term plan is to move on to the other two floors. Do you have a timeline in mind? I know there's a lot of variables there, but...
It's going to depend on our ability to access more dollars because that's what we're doing. And I will say, we will leverage the university's work in Washington, D.C., with our congregation, congregation, Doug, who said, well, sometimes...
Whatever.
To encourage them to, you know, how many times did you hear from the infrastructure bill and childcare and childcare?
Correct.
We're not seeing it coming to Indiana. So we're in there twisting some arms, saying, go get us some of those because it's not going to finish those other two floors. Back to Holly's comments, the state is stepping up and they're going to help us a bit. We need a steady flow of federal dollars to get that cost down for families.
Thank you. And continue to twist those arms. I appreciate that.
Yeah, we've got people we pay out there, and I go fuck them at least once or twice a year.
I appreciate that.
And make them walk me around.
The second thing is, could you just expand, either you or Holly, either one, expand a little bit on what your vision is to work with the other childcare programs to get them to that Level Four certification?
Well, we both could. Do you want to start? And then I can... I don't know if that's a good...
Either or both, it's fine.
So I think that the important piece is that it's something we're already doing. We do it sort of off the record every day. And we're always willing to take phone calls or, you know, answer email inquiries through my work with United Way and Success by Six. That's part of our mission, is to empower those providers who have not let, not yet achieved those higher levels of quality rating. PASTA Quality is a voluntary rating system in the state of Indiana. So while there is a financial incentive to achieve those higher levels, we really have to get to the core or the heart of our providers and help to convince them as to why this is so important, right? So it's not a requirement from the state to just get a PASTA quality. So we have our work cut out for us in terms of helping to educate the workforce and helping them to understand why those higher levels of care should be achieved. So that's part of the puzzle. The other thing is that, you know, anecdotally, anytime that we can empower that provider, then those persons who are in their care are receiving higher quality care, a better education, and hopefully stronger foundation for future. So in working with, and that's another piece of United Way too, so they are more of a regional envelope at the need of support. So for example, in River Grande County, there's some interest in helping to support NICO and other businesses who are in need of childcare. In Hart County, there's interest in adapt groups, Early Learning Coalition. Hart County Launch is starting to gain some traction there. And so when we look at being a regional hub, those pieces are important not just for Terre Haute and not just for ISU, but really those other counties that touch Vigo and that we interface with every day. So I think those providers who are just at the starting aspect of this, you know, we've got an early coalition in place, they're looking to us, our work with, like I said, with United Way and Success by Six, some of the more established programs here in town, and then saying, you know, how do you do this? And how do you make it work? And how do you respond to this type of inquiry? And that's very empowering for those of us who have those resources to be able to help someone else and again, to lift them up.
So you intend to reach out to them and not just wait on them to come to you for that?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
So one thing we've seen with the provider action, a good example is lack of experience with grant writing. So we talk about these dollars that are available for expansion or enhancement of programs, but if you've never been in a position to write a grant or request those dollars, you know, even just an acronym like RFP can be off-putting, right? You have no frame of reference for what that means. So one example of work with United Way is being able to meet one-to-one with a provider and say, you know, this is what the grant is asking you for, this is what you have to provide, is that something you can do? And really helping them to feel like these things are achievable and measurable. And so certainly, it would be providing those services, not just waiting for them to ask.
Well, then I'll take that up a little higher to the level that I work around and try to bring more of those dollars in for this to be disseminated, this work form. That's what a higher-end institution in the community should be doing, is that place where you have experts who are studying the field and then disseminating that knowledge. My vision for this whole program, and it's out there, but it's starting out, is that we become a model for other communities like us. This Wabash Valley has the exact kind of demographic that many other communities around the country would really like to see what works. And that's what our goal is for this process, starting right with that strategic plan, is to be far beyond any kind of university capacity to a region and then lift it up to others to say, here's your model. Here's what it should look like because no matter what the kiddo's family socioeconomic background is, they hit five years old and they're going to school there as ready as any other child.
Thank you. I yield.
Any more questions from the council? All right, well, I thank you both very much. Mr. Mayor, if you would like to move on to the next item of the appropriation?
Hello, Mr. President. Next up is the Terre Haute Humane Society. This is a project that's born out of some issues we've had with access to the facility. I think maybe back in January, we had a meeting to kind of figure out where we were going to go with this and how we could address that. And it's evolved into where we're at today. So, I'd like you to present.
Thank you. I want to thank Mayor Bennett. First of all, I guess I should introduce myself. My name is Ray Bukler. I'm the president of the Board of Directors of the Terre Haute Humane Society. I want to start out by thanking Mayor Bennett for his support of this project. And thank you, council members, for listening to my presentation this evening. And I understand where we're going from papers while I...
I believe so, yes.
Okay. I will try to let you know when to flip your page. The Terre Haute Humane Society intends to build a veterinary clinic adjacent to the existing shelter facility at 1811 South Hurbridge Avenue. This will be a low-cost vet clinic that will offer spay-neuter services, vaccinations, and basic vet care to the public and provide vet care and spay-neuter services to the shelter. The clinic will also include dedicated health space for the city of Terre Haute's animal control and the Vigo County Sheriff's Office's animal control officers. The facility will fulfill short-term and long-term needs. In the short term, it will provide additional health space to the city and county animal control officers. It will also provide a medical resource for animal control, and it will reduce the financial barrier to care to lower-income residents. In the long term, the clinic will tackle stray animal problem in our community through an aggressive, low-cost spay-neuter program. I'll go into more detail on the use of this short-term all for needs in about 20 minutes and then flip it to the next set of slides. As the mayor indicated, we met late last year to kind of discuss some of the issues with overcrowding that we were having at the shelter that were also impacting city and county, for that matter, animal control and their ability to bring animals to the shelter. And that kind of turned into this concept of veterinary clinic with additional space for animal control to use. So in January, we solicited bids from pre-local contractors. And in February, the Terre Haute Humane Society Board of Directors selected Keymark Construction as the design builder. The Keymark bid was $675,700. That was the lowest bid when factoring in design and architecture piece. The other two bids did not include the cost of design and architecture. So in terms of budget, I'm here today to ask for $250,000 in ARPA funds from the city and will be making the same request of the county at the August 1st county council meeting. We currently have on corporate donations of $3,000 to support the project, and we are looking at $25,000 plus in grant opportunities out there that are available to us. While we do have the internal reserves to fund a major of the project cost, our hope is to, through fundraising, grants, and corporate donations, we'll be able to cover the expenses that way. So we won't be able to make up any short hauls through our own funds. And, okay, so the next page, the next set of slides, you have an itemized budget there. If you have any questions about any budget items there, feel free to ask. We're in the discussion. Now I want to move on to, to discuss the short-term goals, benefits of the project. As I already mentioned, the extra kennels will provide a relief valve for animal control to bring animals in. These kennels will be exclusively dedicated to city and county animal control officers. There'll be 10 to 12 kennels available to them at the vet clinic. The Terre Haute Humane Society, however, will be responsible for cleaning and care of the animals that are housed in the vet clinic. So the next issue is provide a veterinary resource for animal control. Right now, if animal control officers encounter a situation where an animal has been seriously injured, they kind of have to call around to local vets to try to get in and have that animal cared for. The vet clinic would serve as the place where they can bring those animals and get that medical attention. And then the next thing is to lower the barrier to care. And when I say barrier to care, that really means make vet care for people a little bit more affordable. In 2018, nationwide, there was an estimated 29 million dogs and cats living with families that were, excuse me, participating in the staff program. In April 2023, 6,300, or excuse me, 6,600 Vigo County households were participating in staff. Nationwide, the common reason that kennels do not seek vet care for their pets is financial and that primarily impacts low-income kennels. Just as kind of an example here, my wife and I, who's sitting there, this week paid over $400 to have our two dogs get their annual checkup and shots. So, I mean, vet care has become very expensive, and that kind of leads into the next item, which is reduce the number of animals relinquished to the shelter due to the inability to pay for vet care. And about 70% of the animals that are relinquished by kennels at the shelter will relinquish specifically because they could not afford vet care for their pets. And so we end up then getting pets that, some have, you know, very serious medical conditions because either the person can't afford to take them to the vet, and they kind of wait, and they essentially bring it to us to either unfortunately have to euthanize because the condition is such that it's not treatable at that point, or we're investing, you know, our resources into vet care for those animals. So one of the short-term goals is to convert those animals from being brought to the shelter by giving them a place where they can find affordable vet care. Next set of slides. Then we'll talk about the long-term benefits of the vet clinic. And that's to reduce the stray animal population... And that's to reduce the stray animal population and be a kind of aggressive, low-cost spay-neuter program. And, and that's really the only way we're going to, to long-term deal with our stray animal population is through aggressive spay-neuter. And unfortunately, the pandemic, along with the closure of the SPOT clinic a couple of years ago, has exacerbated the stray animal problem in, in Terre Haute. And this is not just a Terre Haute-Vigo County problem, it, it's a nationwide problem. Due to the pandemic, nationwide, there's a 2.7 million spay-neuter surgery deficit between 2020 and 2021. So, so over 2.7 million fewer spay-neuter surgeries were conducted nationwide due to the pandemic. And, and just kind of to illustrate how quickly we can have a stray population explode. In seven years, a single pair of cats and their offspring can produce 420,000 kittens. And that's not a typo, like...
I read it twice, I thought it was wrong.
And I go check my research, too, when I, when I was looking at that, because, I mean, that, that's, that's under a perfect scenario where, you know, every one of those, those would survive. But, but I mean, still, it illustrates how quickly cats and kittens reproduce. And unfortunately, 75% of the kittens born as strays don't survive to be adults. So, I mean, there's a little bit of, of a, you know, kind of humanity perspective there and suffering perspective there that, that, you know, having a strong spay-neuter program would, would help to, to relieve. So, the average cost in Indiana to have a dog spayed or neutered at a traditional vet practice is $400. The cost at the THHS clinic will be less than $100, and grants could potentially allow us to offer free spay-neuters to, to low-income residents. And then, kind of the last, you know, thing I wanted to talk about as I was looking at, at this as a, as a potential project for the Terre Haute Humane Society, I decided to look around in Indiana at other communities. Obviously Indianapolis has, has multiple low-cost spay-neuter clinics. South Bend does, Fort Wayne does, and Evansville does. And Evansville is really probably the closest comparable, you know, to, to Terre Haute and to Vigo County. And then the Vandenberg County Humane Society, they have a low-cost clinic that opened in 2012. Last year, they spayed or neutered over 5,000 cats and over 1,700 dogs. And in, in the now 13 years that they've been open, they've performed over 100,000 spay-neuter surgeries. So, that, that's a huge impact, you know, there in, in that area. And, and, you know, from an aspirational perspective, they also provide spay-neuter services to surrounding counties, including Kentucky and Illinois. And, you know, while the initial focus will be, you know, for Terre Haute and Vigo County, the long-term goal is to be able to reach out to the surrounding communities and surrounding shelters and offer spay-neuter services, you know, to them as well. And then, you know, there's also a long-term potential for, really for the clinic to become a regional center for low-cost spay-neuter and vet care. And so, the next slide is, or next set of slides is, the top one is a site plan. And so, and it's, I realize it's really hard to tell here, but on the right-hand side edge of the, of the site plan, that, that's Hurbridge Avenue. And then, here is the existing shelter, is this kind of this white space. And then, here is the parking lot, the existing parking lot. The, the vet clinic will go right there. It's going to be a 4,000 square foot facility. And then you can, the next slide, which is the actual floor plan. I'm just going to point out a couple of things. And we'll see how well I do upside down if you want to step out. So, here's going to be the public entrance, small lobby. There'll be a large surgical suite with surgical recovery rooms here. And then, up here in the, in the, would be the upper left-hand corner, is probably, I think, what probably the mayor is supposed to do. And that's the, that's the kennels for, for animal control. And there's kind of a load-up shot of that section from this slide. So, there'll be a garage there to the left of the kennel, so the animal control officers will be able to pull into the garage, unload any dogs that they have. These are, these are all dog kennels there, and pigs and dogs in the kennels. There's also be some shared office spades in there that they can use for paperwork and things of that nature, rather than having to sit in a room and, and do paperwork after they bring animals in. It'll be a break room that they'll have access to as well. And then, the next thing, and I think that is the last thing, is we're talking a little bit about financial sustainability. We estimate that the annual operating expenses will be about $400,000. An initial staffing will be a full-time vet, two to three vet techs, and a clinic manager. We believe that our annual income will be around $400,000 as well. It should be, it should be a wash. We anticipate that in, in the first year of, of operations. And I'm ready for questions, if you have any questions.
Okay, again, as last time, I will allow the public to ask questions at the end of this appropriation. Council, do you have any questions on this piece of the appropriation?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Nation.
I'd just like to state that I think this is a great idea, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Mayor, if you would like to come back up?
Should have been done a long time ago. Should have been done a long time ago.
Having extra kennels is really important for us, and that's kind of what started this conversation, as I mentioned earlier. But we also have funds in our existing budget for spay and neuter, and we don't have a provider. And so, this is going to give us a chance to be able to have annual dollars to help assist with this, especially low-income folks. So, I think we can, I don't know if we have those numbers Vandenberg County did, which can sure make a bigger difference than what we've been able to do since we don't have a local provider to assist us with that. The last piece of this is what we've discussed on numerous occasions related to the radios for the police and fire department. You have a principal and interest on, on notes, and then the last section being purchase of equipment for the other departments who we not purchased radios for. I know that some have asked, you know, about planning and all that. We knew that the radios would last anywhere from 15 to 20 years. That's kind of what we're told. These lasted about 15. Last time, they lasted about 17 or 18. So, that's what I was hoping for originally, that they would last. Problem is, supply chain, COVID had an impact on that, and it would get parts for our radios for police and fire department. So, we've put ourselves in a really precarious position at times where radios weren't working. I explained that in the last meeting. We talked about this. So, we went ahead and moved ahead with the project because we got an opportunity to purchase and get nearly a $400,000 reduction in our cost to buy those police and fire radios. It was 300 and some, nearly $400,000. So, we did that. And so, we, we worked. We got a loan from the State of Indiana. We've made one payment this year. What we're proposing is to pay that off, just be done with it, and use these funds. As you know, public safety is one of the primary things of COVID-related funds with ARPA. No questions asked on anything you spend on public safety. This is the only thing we're proposing at this point. I don't have anything else floating in the background for public safety. But a huge expense, clearly. You know, we can continue to pay for it through the existing budgets, but we worked really hard to get our cash reserves in place. And if we add a significant expense on to our existing budgets, it will definitely devastate our, our cash reserves, which then puts us back, you know, potentially where we are a few years ago, and we don't want that. So, I think this is the best use of money. That's why we brought it to the table. The ARPA team agreed with this many, many months ago, last year when we talked about it. And I'm hopeful the council will support it. The last piece then with purchase of equipment. If you approve this, if we get the appropriation, then we'll have, you know, $764,000 to buy radios for all the other departments. They're not as sophisticated as radios, you know, what we bought for police and fire. And so, we'll be right in the ballpark at what, what's needed for that. So, just as a wrap, I appreciate you listening to the presentations tonight. I, I, I'm still, would ask you to at least consider voting tonight. You can also amend this, if there's some piece of this you just don't like or you want more information on, we can amend this particular ordinance and take something out, if that's what you choose to do, and then deal with it next month or whatever you decide to do. But I want you to do the public comment, and I'll be happy to answer specific questions.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to give a comment or ask a question about Appropriation 7, 2023?
God, I would be red about the street, Joe. I can think of no more important task than what was talked about in the first vacation that we had here. I have said this before, and I say this from my own experience for God's sake, the number one thing kids have to be taught is how to read. There is nothing more important in their entire life than their ability to read and read well. And here's the thing, when she gave her speech, and I liked it, and I'm all for it, but it seems like it ends at the age of six. If you're going to teach kids to read, it's got to go all the way through shits. And they've got to try and be better all the way, because every child learns differently. Now, some learn, some children learn very well, you know. Other children, they learn a little this and that, and everybody around them says that. But every single child learns differently. So, you've got to come up with a way to teach them exactly. You've got to teach them to read by five, five, six, seven years old. If they're going to be able to continue to read that and that, the longer they will read, the more chance they are to get a high school and college degree.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and turn the conversation toward the council at this time. Council?
Mr. President.
Councilman Nation.
I have one question for the mayor about the parks part of it all. The Deming Park pool, what's our, our budget for that? Like, the actual amount of money we're going to spend on upgrading the pool?
It, it's a little unknown, but it's probably going to be in the four, four and a half million range. It's just a real early ballpark estimate from the consultants we're talking to, not the architect consultants we're talking to.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
And I'll be able to explain that more probably, and I'll have a lot more information later on.
Well, I remember you said that the bucket is $5 million, and what is in front of us tonight is $1 million of those $5 million, right?
Right, and we're going to be seeking ready funds and other, there's other sources of income that'll help us pay for that, and it won't all be ARPA funds.
And, and significantly, the $1 million that we're talking about tonight for the four different parks, that's all design. None of it is actually like...
I think we'll have some Ray Park construction beginning of November, and I think we'll have Demolition and Hertz Rose Park in November.
Okay, and that'll be covered within this $1 billion that we're talking about tonight?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Councilperson Crosson.
I also have a Parks question. And since most of the, most of the money anyways, for design, planning, and purposes, do you have plans to involve the public in the design plans? And, and how, and if so, how will that happen?
Oh, it's already happened over the last few years. For Hertz Rose Park, we've had multiple public input sessions. At Bearbanks Park, we had two, we had 1,800 responses to our survey. Tremendous amount of public input. The Deming Park pool is kind of, I'll be able to explain more about this in August, but we've got a lot of public input about water facilities. Through our CIB feasibility study we're doing, and that will all be a part of the response to that. And then Ray Park also, I mean, we had, we got a whole community committee that spent two years, and Earl was a big part of that, that did a tremendous amount of public meetings. We've had probably more public meetings with the three projects and four than we've had on any other thing we've done.
I, in terms of when we take action, I, I have some concerns about having things that are, as you know, I'm not happy about using ARPA funds to pay for what I consider to be operating expenses for the city. And I voiced that before, and I, I guess I would prefer, not that I'm necessarily thinking all of this needs to be put off a week, but I would prefer to vote on the non, or on the ones that are, actually relate directly to expenses of the city in a separate resolution from those that are ARPA funds being given to other community organizations to do work that the city won't be doing. And, you know, I certainly would like to have that discussion with, with all of you if you all have opinions about that. I don't, I know it's hard to do all of this stuff piecemeal, and I'm not even saying that I think we should do each one separately. I'm not saying that. But at the same time, I don't want to be in a position to vote for or against something just because it's with other things I want to vote for or against. So, I raise that concern.
As a reminder, Mr. President, if there is a vote to take action, then you must have six yes votes.
Thank you.
Does that include animals?
Well, you, you would have to have the animals to vote after, but you have to have six yes votes.
Councilman Azar.
You know, unfortunately, the pandemic happened. But fortunately, we were able to get some funds that we can do things with that we otherwise probably couldn't do. Our committee has met several times. I believe everybody's been pretty transparent on how the money's to be divided, et cetera. I understand Martha's concerns. However, I personally would like to see us go forward with this and at least take action on that, on the appropriation tonight. That's just my humble opinion. I yield.
I'll entertain a motion if there's any more comments. Councilman Azar.
There's no further discussion. I move we take action on Appropriation 7, 2023.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilman Nation, that we take action on, forgive me, Appropriation 7, 2023. Those in favor of taking action this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
No.
Okay, we will not be taking action on that this evening.
It will be on August 3rd.
It will be on the agenda of our August 3rd meeting.
So, I would ask, you know, I've asked the council repeatedly for questions or for issues to me regarding any of these things. I would love to hear them before the next meeting so I can prepare what we need to be able to vote on it, because I don't think anything's going to change between now and the next meeting. So, be happy to answer any questions you have between now and next.
Thank you, Mayor.
Can I make one observation?
Councilman Nation.
Is what I'm hearing, that we need to have each of these be a separate appropriation?
I, I would just like to be the ones that are actually funding city general expenses be separate from the others. I don't need to have all of them be separate.
So, if we break out the police radios into a separate appropriation, and everybody can vote the way they want to, and we can bundle the rest of them and, and have that work?
But do you want that, is the pleasure of the council that we refile this that way? Or are we going to deal with this in the next meeting as it is, and then not moving forward, not following your suggestion?
Because it's got to be filed about...
And you'd have to rehab or something.
Yeah.
Like tomorrow.
Yeah, it'd have to be filed tomorrow.
Yeah.
That's true. Tomorrow's the deadline. I'm not sure if we can pull that off, and might be able to. So, if, you know, you just wait next month, you're going to vote on all of it, then it's fine. We'll do that, and we won't, next time, we'll separate it.
Because we will have to vote on it next month. Okay, I'm sorry.
If you're not, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Councilwoman Alloch.
I think if we're going to start separating it, I mean, then...
Might as well separate them.
You're going to have to separate them all, because how are you going to say, you know, one person might want something not in there, and somebody else might not want something in there, so it... So if we're going to make the decision, my personal opinion, if you're going to separate, start separating it, then you might as well separate them all.
And what you were saying, moving forward.
Moving forward after, yes, so that way at least this one, we don't have to rehab or-
President, if I could just say, this was my choice, this is the way we did it the first time, I didn't get any pushback, and so I thought we followed the same path.
Sure.
I'm happy to do it anyway that your preference is.
Okay.
And I hear Councilwoman Crossen's concern.
Councilwoman Crossen.
Okay, maybe George wasn't getting it.
Council-
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I just want to say, my concern again is that we not handle appropriations to community groups to address issues that came about largely because of the pandemic, that we could have all of those together. So we could have pretty much everything here, except maybe, except the police funds in one. So I'm not suggesting that every time you come forward, that is, but if you do have those ones that relate to our budgeting and our expenditures in the city, that they be separate. If we're not, and I don't know what procedurally where that puts it, if we're going to come back here on the 13th and have the same ordinance in front of us, then I would prefer to rescind my vote and vote on it tonight. But I would ask that we take a different path.
As a member of the prevailing side, can I ask for us to vote again?
I'm going to have to ask Michelle.
Well, the question is, what's the prevailing side?
Prevailing side would be her.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
She'd be the prevailing side.
And you did not hit the gavel.
I don't think I did.
Okay. Then, yes, Councilperson Crossen can ask to reconsider her vote as a member of the prevailing side, and then we can take, vote to take action again.
There's a lot of power in this gavel, apparently. Councilman Azar.
In that case, I once again move to take action.
She didn't, she didn't.
What?
She's got to rescind.
I've got to ask to-
I thought you said she did.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said you did.
No, I asked what the-
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. Mike, if I may.
Please, go ahead.
If she doesn't, and if this goes to the next meeting, we are going to vote on it, correct? And we have to have six votes, is that correct? Huh?
You have to have six yes tonight if you have unanimous consent to take action.
The next meeting will be-
Next meeting will be five. Okay, so if she does not, and I appreciate what she's saying, and I, you know, respect her opinion, but if we let this go ahead and just go to the next meeting, then we vote on it, it's going to take five votes, and from what I gather, I would assume we probably have the five votes to pass this.
And instead of being advertised for that meeting, because I always advertise for two meetings.
For two minutes.
And if we do it, if we try to take this and separate all these, then we're going to be going another month or two before we get anything done.
Yeah, because of legal advertisement requirements.
Because of the legal advertisement requirements. That's my opinion, so take it from there. Council can do what they want.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilwoman Cross-
Yeah.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Mayor Bennett, did you initially say in the beginning that we could approve this or amend this?
You could, you could remove something. You have that right to do every appropriation that we bring to the table.
You can't have-
You could have done it before. I'm sorry?
You cannot have.
So you can't have, but you can withdraw.
You can amend.
But then we start to re-advertise.
Sure.
Which I'm willing to do that, and I'm-
Would that resolve this concern?
But you still got to go back through a longer process, which probably goes in September.
For everything, or just for this one?
Whatever.
Just whatever we amend.
And on radio discussion, to see how that will be an additional interest conflict.
That's what I was just giving.
Keep it on.
Give me a ask.
Just, I'm not, I understand your concern, but I get it.
Okay, point of order.
Councilman Azar.
If Councilperson Crossen, her vote no tonight, then that means we can't do anything tonight on this vote. But if she allows us to vote on this tonight, then after we approve the taking action, at that point, we can amend it, and if the majority of the council wants to remove that part out of the appropriation, we can do that tonight.
It's going to be six no matter what you do tonight.
I understand that. But we can still remove that appropriation if the six say yes. We can do that tonight, correct? So the key to it then is, you need to rescind your vote, and we take action on this, and let the cards fall where they may. Correct or not? Am I right on that?
You're right.
Thank you.
I'm not attorney of this thing.
I'm not either, but Richard?
Richard's back there yawning, so I don't know.
Yeah, we already bored Richard to death.
Well, he's done that to us a few times. Can I say something?
Councilperson Loudermilk, yes.
Basically, and Councilperson Crossen, I respect your opinion on this too, and understand your concerns with using it for general purposes, if we should say. But again, working with the ARPA fund so much, it was stressed for public safety so much, and they, the radios were old, and there's been many of them out, and the radios weren't working. For me, I'm looking at it saying, it's a way we didn't have to take from another fund to pay for these radios. I'm a full-time job, I'm trying to convince them on that side.
I yield.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Cross-
First, let me just respond to Councilperson Loudermilk. I absolutely do not doubt for one second that we needed to replace the radios. That is not my concern. My concern is that that's an ongoing general operating cost of the city, and I'm, one of my guiding principles on the ARPA funds has been that we always spend them to get things in our city that we would not otherwise be able to have if we didn't have the ARPA funds. So that's my concern about spending it here, and I understand that there are potential cost savings and interest and that sort of thing, but I think it's a matter of our responsibility in planning our financial affairs, to be planning for those expenditures, and not, it would be different if it was a piece of equipment that just, you know, somebody ran into, or lightning struck, or something like that, and we had to replace right away because it was a piece of public safety equipment. But this seems to me that it's something that we should have been planning for, and we shouldn't need to use our ARPA funds to replace these radios since they are in something we knew we were going to have to replace in 15 to 20 years. So that is my concern about the ARPA funds. That said, if the will of this group is not to separate these things out, and to vote, I do not want to jeopardize the other items that are being asked to be funded. If it would be the will of the group to amend it, that would be preferable to me to take the police radio funds out, so that they could be voted on at a separate time. I would appreciate that, and I would ask the group to do that. If that's not the case, I will rescind my objection to going forward tonight, if that's the correct language to use for the record.
I don't know.
No.
I think it would be more of, I rescind my no vote for taking action.
That's what I said, but in so many words, but I rescind my no vote for taking action.
Okay, thank you. I will entertain a motion to take action on this item tonight.
Third time.
Councilman Azar.
I move to take action on appropriation seven 2023.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilperson Loudermilk, that we take action this evening on appropriation seven 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Action can be taken this evening.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilwoman Crossen.
I propose an amendment to appropriation seven 2023 that would rescind, not rescind, I don't want that word, that would have all items voted on except the purchase of equipment number 0199-0006-04-444010, and the amount of $764,000, and that the remaining items remain in the appropriation for tonight's vote.
Is that the right one?
I don't think that was it.
764,000?
Oh, which one was it? I'm sorry, I may have done the wrong one.
This is the 2.4, I believe.
It's the 2.4.
So-
Which one is the police radio?
These radios are the-
I'm sorry, I did read the wrong number. I apologize.
So you just want to pull-
I just want to start over.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Cross-
Mr. President, I move to amend appropriation number seven 2023 to remove from the appropriation the amount of $2,405,000, principal on notes and leases, number 0199-006-03-439178, and add that I just wanted to know what Michelle goes through every week.
Is that it? Because we need to reduce the total, the front.
Okay.
So you need to, is that the only amount you want taken out?
Yes.
So that would take the total, Councilman Alloch, check my math, to 3.195 million?
What, say that?
3.195 million.
No, I don't have to calculate, but that was 5.6 million, not 2,405 and 31,000?
Three.
Yeah. And the 34,000.
The 31,000 is the interest. That's all the radios. And you may include both of those.
And what's the purchase of the equipment?
Police and fire radios.
That was police and fires, the last one.
Principal and interest.
So the 5243 and the 31, plus the 2,405.
2,405 plus 31,000, so.
And I would add-
34, 36.
So Councilwoman Crossen, I believe you intend to add the interest on notes and leases to your amended-
I do, I do. Thanks.
If you want to go ahead and do that.
Yes, and I would include in that amendment request, interest on notes and leases, number
And reduce the total from-
And reduce the total from-
Whatever the numbers.
Neil's got this.
3,164,000.
I'm just sending a message. Been late for dinner. Yeah, I thought about that too. Yes, Councilwoman Loudermilk.
I might have missed this, but for clarification, 764,000, purchase of equipment?
No.
That is not-
For non-police environment radios.
But it's radios, for the rest of the city.
Different type of radio, different-
But it's radios for the rest of the city that we'd have to replace-
But that is also the-
That's separate.
That we'd have to replace in 15 to 17 years, or they'll-
They're 27 years old right now. Here on that, this happens form, most of our radios are-
So we would have had to have replaced them.
Can you give me one second?
Yes, 27 years old.
And let me look for a document for this.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
All right, give me one second.
We will give you one second.
We're in bad shape. But they're not public safety. So it's not critical for me.
But they are city. You're saying that they are city, they are-
It's for the rest of the city.
The rest of the city.
I think we should include this, too.
They're not police apart. And they haven't been purchased, nothing has happened, we have to go through the process. We'll go through the state QPA to determine.
While we're giving Michelle her one second, I'm also, like Neil, going to message my wife and tell her I probably won't make it home for dinner.
I think she knows that.
She probably has it, yeah.
My husband's already told me my dinner's cold.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Crossen, yes.
And I apologize to all of you for the ineptness of this, that I didn't anticipate needing to be prepared for it in this way. I take Councilwoman Loudermilk's point and believe that the amendment should also include the $764,000, which I originally had included, because I'm sorry, I just wasn't, I didn't have all the full description in front of me when I was making the amendment. Because, and Mr. Mayor, if I could just verify with you again for myself, the last three items in the appropriation are all city radio expenses.
Yeah, principal and interest for police and fire, the last one is all other city parks.
Okay.
They've not been purchased yet.
Okay, okay. So if you all will indulge me to include those last three items in the amendment, I would appreciate it.
Sure.
I'm almost ready.
So that will change the bottom line.
It's 2.4.
2.4 million, Michelle.
I'm getting it sorted out. Give me one second.
Yeah, is there a second? That's, anything by second?
It has not been seconded yet. The motion is on the floor by Councilwoman Crossen to amend appropriation seven 2023 to remove the last three items of that appropriation that we have before us.
I'm going to second it, and I would like, I mean, I'm going to second it because I think moving forward, we need to consider this when we bring the appropriations forward, not necessarily because I oppose the expenditure, or because I'm in favor of it. I think it's just a good process moving forward if we consider that. So I'll second it.
While, Michelle, you still need a second?
Can I add on to that, Chris?
Councilwoman Loudermilk, yes.
But if we're going to do that, and not to make more work for our clerk and our mayor, but I suggest that we do each one separately.
From after tonight's-
I don't care if it's a donation or an agreement, because someone, if this is what we're going to do, and someone's not going to agree, we might as well do it right up front.
We can either agree as a council now to do that, or through communications with the mayor and council members, however-
Just my opinion, if you're going to do it for that, you need to set precedent.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor.
So it's unwilling to do whatever, but it is a tremendous amount of work to bring them all out. But if Michelle's game, we'll do it.
Is it the will of the council to-
I do, I do.
Let's see how the vote goes.
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we vote on this first?
I'm sorry.
You're okay.
No, I yield.
Because there's no-
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry.
You're fine.
Because there's no way to pick out, you know, something my, that I don't want in something might be in something, or, you know, vice versa. I agree, and that's where I went earlier, that if we're going to separate it, I think everything is separated. I'm sorry about all the paperwork, but that's going to prevent from what we're going through now.
Is there, is everybody on the council thinking the same, would like to see every item separate on these future appropriations for ARPA funds? Councilman Nation.
I think we're getting away from the point that Councilperson Crossen made, which is the distinction between city expenditures for what would be normal city budget stuff and everything else. So in my mind, isn't this the only one that is a city regular expense?
I think we'll have, not a lot, but I think we'll have a few. So here's what I would suggest. Whoever sponsors this, before they sponsor it, can hold the sample and see if you want to split them up, because somebody has to agree to what we submit. So I will do my best to meet that, what you're requesting, and we'll create it that way, and then whoever the sponsor is, whether it's Earl, as he did on this one, or-
Then don't ask me to sponsor.
Me either.
Me either. All right, one, yeah, I want to make a comment here.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
We were given some information early on that summarized the use of ARPA funds in total for the plans that had been put together, okay? And I looked at what our plan was and tried to put our expenditures into those categories to see if we were out of line in what we were proposing and what we were doing here, and we were not, okay? So I would encourage you all to go back and look at that, find that piece of appropriation, and see what that is that the communities as a whole are using related to city-type expenses. Now, I don't really consider, I mean, this is a, these are capital improvements, these are capital assets, in my mind. And the other thing I want to remind you of is, we spent years getting rid of our debt and building a cash reserve. And if you want to throw 3.2 million dollars of that cash reserve away, because we don't want to, you have heartburn over using our- because we don't want to have heartburn over using ARPA funds for it, so be it. But I don't think it's the right thing. I mean, I just don't. If our plan fits those overall categories, why should we be a whole heck of a lot different than what the averages are that we've been provided? So do it however you all want to do it. But my votes or my actions are going to be based upon consideration of that information by you.
Councilman Azar.
And I totally agree with Earl. I, you know, we've had our committee meetings, we've discussed all this. And maybe, I don't know, maybe I'm not looking at it right. But if we use the funds for what it's intended for here, it just frees up those funds we would have had to use.
We have 3.2 million dollars of public safety.
Public safety.
And CC.
It frees that money up, right? Am I right or, maybe I'm wrong on that.
There'll be other things.
Okay.
Just things we haven't talked about yet, I mean, arrived.
Okay, thank you, I yield.
The motion?
Yes, there's.
I will entertain a motion. Is there a motion for?
Tammy seconded it. To amend.
Okay, who made that motion?
I made it and Tammy seconded it.
Tammy seconded it.
Okay. This is to amend. No, this is to go on the amended.
This is to amend, to vote on amendment.
It's late, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
Anybody got a blanket?
Okay. It has, there's a motion on the floor to amend appropriation 7, appropriation 7, 2023. This was made by Councilwoman Crossen, seconded by Councilwoman Bowland.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call, to amend appropriation 7.
As presented.
As presented.
Councilperson Aller.
No.
Councilperson Azar.
No.
Councilperson Bowland.
Yes.
Councilperson Crossen.
Yes.
Councilperson Elliott.
No.
Councilperson Garrison.
No.
Councilperson Lautermilke.
No.
Councilperson Nation.
No.
Councilperson DeBon.
No.
That's two yes, seven no.
Okay, appropriation 7 has, did that, the amendment to appropriation 7 did not. Now, I will entertain a motion to take action on appropriation 7.
No, 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 we already did that.
We already did that.
Take action.
We already did that.
Oh, we already took, okay. Thank you, thank you, Councilman.
Because we just took action.
Yes, you're right, you're right. I'm usually pretty good at this.
We're all tired. I make a motion that we approve appropriation 7 as presented, what?
I really, I really hate to be the bearer of bad news because there is no legal assistance next to me, but you voted to take action. Then you voted to take action. Voted for an action and that action was defeated. So at this point, does it, is it going to carry to August 3rd, or can you go ahead and vote to pass?
And we did take action, we took action to amend it.
I don't think that, I, I'm not.
With action on the amendment, not on the, not on the appropriation.
I'm okay either way, just.
Yeah, I think that we can take, I think we can vote on this tonight.
Yes, I do too.
And if not, then the lawyers can get in touch with us and put us all in jail.
You voted the amendment down. Put the amendment down. If someone else wants to do a motion on.
Now you can make a motion on the, okay, I move
I agree with you.
That we approve appropriation 7 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Lautermilke, that we approve.
Roll call.
Approve appropriation, appropriation 7 as is in front of us.
As originally presented.
Originally presented. Roll call, vote please, Michelle.
Councilperson Aller.
Yes.
Councilperson Azar.
Yes.
Councilperson Bowland.
Yes.
Councilperson Crossen.
Yes.
Councilperson Elliott.
Yes.
Councilperson Garrison.
Yes.
Councilperson Lautermilke.
Yes.
Councilperson Nation.
Yes.
Councilperson DeBon.
Yes.
That's nine yes.
All right, the appropriation passes. I want to thank all of you who spent your time here, who gave presentations to us. I speak for myself, I think these are both great programs, and I look forward to seeing what happens. Yeah, we have, we have a bit more. Next item.
General Ordinance 5, 2023, amending city code, creating Chapter 2, Article 9, Section 2-110, capital S F L C.
Presenter, petitioner.
Probably lastly.
Thank you.
Y'all don't have to leave.
I'll try to, yeah, we're just getting started. Good evening, Mr. President.
Good evening.
Members of the council, I'm Leslie Ellis, the City Controller. I have general ordinance number five and number six that will be next. We have internal policies regarding these, and the State Board of Accounts suggested that we have the council approve them officially. And Baker Tilly also said that it should help with our bond rating next time we go for a, to get a bond issued. General Ordinance number five pertains to our capital asset policy, which has to do with the categorization, I guess I'm getting tired, of the assets which are listed, the major categories, what the definitions are, the amount of years they'll be depreciated, and just the general guidelines. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Is there anybody in the audience who has a question on General Ordinance 5, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Yes.
May I make a suggestion, since these are all, it looks to me like have more housekeeping issues, that I can make a motion to take action on General Ordinance 5, 6, and 7?
It has been moved by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilwoman Bowland, that tonight we take action on General Ordinance 5, 6, and 7, 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, action can be taken on those items this evening. Councilman Nation?
If there's no further discussion, I move that we approve General Ordinance number 5, 2023.
Second.
It was moved by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Elliott, that we take action, I'm sorry, that we approve General Ordinance 5, 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Next item, please.
General Ordinance 6, 2023, amending city code, creating Chapter 2, Article 9, Section 2-110, investment policy.
Petitioner.
I'm Leslie Ellis, the City Controller. This is the investment policy we've been following, and we are just codifying it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question on General Ordinance 6, 2023? Counsel. Councilman Eli.
Leslie, who drafted this?
This one came from Baker Tilly.
From where?
Baker Tilly.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I presume there's a lot of state law that's involved.
Yes, there is. In fact, I printed out a little bit for you all.
Oh, okay. So the answer, yes.
This mirror is ours.
This just warmed my heart when this came from Lingle to.
Very good.
Read and to ask if I'd sponsor or not, and I just want to comment. Interest is now going the other way.
I told him he's getting bored.
Earl, when I saw it, I knew that you had brought it to them.
It's exciting for us accountants.
I'll entertain a motion. If the conversation's over, Councilman Nation?
If there's no further conversation, I move for approval of General Ordinance number 6, 2023.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Bowland, that we approve General Ordinance 6, 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
General Ordinance 7, 2023, amending city code, Chapter 6, Section 6-89.7, Animal Control Commission establishment duties.
I'll act as petitioner on this one. Over the last few months, I have had members of the Animal Control Commission reach out to me with questions about procedure, with concerns about how the board was operating. I felt, and I talked to a few of you on this council about this, I felt that it might make sense to allow for a council member to sit on that board as a non-voting member. That way, there will be a council member there to ask any, I'm sorry, to answer any questions that we would be in a position to answer. That really is what this comes down to. Is there anybody in the audience who has a question on General Ordinance 7, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilwoman Crossen.
There's no further discussion. I move approval of General Ordinance 7, 2023.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Crossen, seconded by Councilwoman Bowland, that we approve General Ordinance 7, 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. We'll talk about that later. Next item, please.
Special Ordinance 13, 2023, rezoning a property located at 2620 and 2626 Jackson Street. Area planing gave a favorable with conditions recommendation, you must vote to take action.
Thank you for hanging in there with us tonight, Richard.
Good evening, council. I don't know if you remember me, I'm Richard Jagley. I'm here before you, good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm here tonight with the law firm, Richard Jagley and Lowry, and tonight I'm here on behalf of Jagga Grand. This property is kind of right behind Archie's in that vicinity, off of 63 Upper Street. This is kind of interesting, maybe it's too late for this to be interesting, but it was interesting in that the owner had originally was going to rezone this to an M2 for a HVAC business. Which is weird because M2, because it was HVAC, had to be in that. Anyway, the day before filing, the potential buyer of this came down, was made aware of an illness. And the petitioner let him out of the agreement. As a result, but at the same time, the petitioner, the owner, has been trying to market this property for, and sell for quite a while, and it hasn't sold because it's currently zoned residential. It's a planned development that I don't think ever fell through, but I don't think it also ever was revoked, so it still shows on Beacon as R1. So the petitioner's here this evening asking for this to be rezoned as C2. And that's why there's no site plan, is because we don't know exactly what's going to happen. And the other thing is, and as far as peace of mind, area plan gave it a favorable recommendation, the area plan commission gave it a favorable recommendation. And one of the things, discussing this matter with Mr. Maurer, was that because it's a C2 and it's approximately to residential, they're going to have to get some variances. So there'll be another body that will, this will have to go through, and then we'll have more notices go out. But I will say at the area plan commission meeting, there was nobody in remonstrance, and there, also no one has reached out to me or to the office, or the area plan office with any concerns about this. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from anybody in the audience on Special Ordinance 13, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Aller.
There's no further questions. I move that we vote to take action on Special Ordinance 13, 2023.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Aller, seconded by Councilwoman Crossen, that we take action this evening on Special Ordinance 13, 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, action can be taken this evening.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Aller.
There's no further questions. I move that we approve Special Ordinance 13, 2023 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Aller, seconded by Councilwoman Lautermilke, that we approve Special Ordinance 13, 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Passes. Next item, please.
Special Ordinance 14, 2023, rezoning a property located at 1728 North 8th Street. Area plan gave a favorable with conditions recommendation, as a reminder, you have to vote to take action.
Petitioner.
Good evening, Mr. President, fellow members of the council. My name is Richard Jagley, I'm with the law firm, Richard Jagley and Lowry. And I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, Terre Haute Land Company LLC. As you may recall, 1728 North 8th Street is part of a block that is directly behind Union Hospital. I was here pre-COVID, I think, and we rezoned it from R1 to R3. That plan has changed. The the proposed use as a medical clinic, I unfortunately am not privy to the information of who the potential buyer is. And because of that, there's also, that's the reason there's not a site plan. And this is similar to the previous special ordinance in that because currently that block is all zoned R1, and when you put it in the C2, it creates some buffer requirements and some, that will require some need for some variances due to the fact approximately to the R1s. So again, like the previous special ordinance, this entity will have to go through another phase, which will also include more notices. But I can tell you, at area plan, the staff report gave it a favorable recommendation. The full commission gave it a full approved recommendation. And our office nor the area plan office received anybody complaining about this. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the audience on Special Ordinance 14, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President?
Councilman Nation?
I have concerns about this. Unlike the other one that went before, this is, while one can make the case that this is part of the Union Hospital campus, it's actually surrounded by residences. And it's not a place for medical clinic. There's lots of land that's already been cleared all around there that isn't right up against people's houses. I think that this bears closer scrutiny than we're going to give it at 9:53 PM during this meeting. I'll yield until our vote.
Just as a reminder, these two city lots that are owned by Terre Haute Land Company is part of a block that is owned by Union Hospital that although it's zoned R1, I don't, I can't speak on behalf of Union Hospital, but I don't anticipate Union Hospital putting any residential housing in this block. And this block is also in the shadow of Union Hospital. It is, although there is residential in the area, I mean, this is a, the intended use of this property was, the future intended use of this property is not for residential, it is for commercial use.
Mr. President?
Councilman Garrison?
As you heard the petitioner say, this is adjacent to or near Union Health property. And because I'm employed there, I will be abstaining from this vote or any discussion.
Thank you, Councilman Garrison.
Thank you, President.
You're welcome.
Thank all of you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks. I thank all of you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Nation?
If there's no further thanking to do, I vote to take action on Special Ordinance number 14, 2023.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilman Nation. And seconded by Councilman Azar that we take action this evening on Special Ordinance 14, 2023. Those in favor of taking action, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, action will not be taken on that item. Who else was a no on this?
I would.
Azar and Crossen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last item, ready?
I'm ready. Next item, Michelle.
Okay, we had one company not file ACF1 form, and that is TriAerospace. I have been told that they are titled, the company name is Fast Track LLC. I've not been able to reach anybody. So you can take a vote on a blank CF1 form and find them not in substantial compliance and set them for hearing if you wish. It was granted in 2017. The only one that never filed.
Councilman Nation?
Has it gotten to the point where it's not worth it to them to file?
What I have found, and Councilperson Lautermilke may be able to expand on this, is that when a new company comes in, they have no idea what the old company was doing. Jadcor was bought out by Revolution, and I worked with those people for several weeks.
Do you want me to make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion on resolution. I'll make a motion on resolution nineteen, two thousand seventeen, for Tri Aerospace, that we find them not in compliance and bring them in.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Louter Milk, seconded by Councilwoman Bowlin, that we find resolution nineteen, two thousand seventeen, not in substantial compliance, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, they are found not in substantial compliance. Same hearing, yeah. The same date that we have the.
It's a trick, come on.
It's a trick, um, the third, the third at five thirty. Yes.
Are we done? Well, before I make a motion to adjourn, I want to make one observation, we've been here so long that even Mr. Hyde's too tired to ask a question. I move to adjourn.
It has been moved by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilman Nation to adjourn, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all in the audience.